I haven't heard from you as well. Too good to assist. Yeah.
That was a little.
Yeah.
They're not.
It's coming. And now we'll stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
My. Yes. Yes. Oh, I know. Oh, I know. Oh, I know.
Well, seriously. Well, seriously. Well, seriously.
We're. We're.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, in the Father, Son, and Jesus Christ. For all. Okay, Kim Harris, we're here. Councilwoman Sharon R. Here. Let's read that. For. Let's move it up here. Councilwoman Merk Curtis.
Here.
City Manager Nate Sainz-Berry. City Attorney Brian Bailey.
Here.
Fire Department Director Suzie Johnson.
Here.
Chief Josh Thomas.
Here.
Chief Jimmy Settle. Building and zoning enforcement officer Marty Lewis.
Here.
Street Commissioner Mike Sarret.
Here.
Senator Detective Tree Evans. Excuse. You have in your packet the minutes of the regular session and the special sessions that were held in May. If you want to take a few minutes to look those over. Make some comments. Question, on the May twenty-third minutes of this discussion of cutting grass in city and lots, did we request that be done more periodically? We called it spring. Did we decide that?
Yeah, twice. Um, cut weekly.
The lot was springing across this room. Girl, anymore. The back office somewhere came in. Is that how it works? We called. He's back. It was a request about actual pushing.
Sorry. I think I probably would contract it straight. Some of the discussion of cutting grass in city and lots. Will not request it with none of them starting them to be done weekly.
Okay. For this amendment correction.
Yeah.
Will we retain a motion to approve the minutes of both meetings with the correction noted?
To approve the minutes special.
Second motion. It's been moved in second, all in favor say aye. Aye, opposed. Motion carries. Next, we have the. Next on the agenda is presentation for Max and Dix.
How's it going, everybody?
Good.
Sorry, am I coming in clearer for you guys?
Yes.
Perfect, okay. Well, nice to meet everybody. I know I met a couple people here, but wanted to introduce myself. My name is Max. I am calling you guys, I'm over in San Mateo, California, just twenty minutes south over from San Francisco, from Veracata. I oversee basically the sled space, state local education for the state of West Virginia. I take care of a couple counties in Maryland, but West Virginia is really, really the home for me. And I'm excited to kind of go over some stuff with you. I know that you, I believe there is a slide deck that we have already uploaded. Is that correct for you guys? Or would you like me to share my screen? I could do it either way.
Please share your screen.
Okay, you want me to share my screen? Okay, yeah, not a problem, I'll do that. And what I like to do on these, by the way, if there's any questions at all, please feel free, stop me at any time. It's better to kind of have a discussion as we walk through it. But I'll go over a couple slides about Veracata's background and then our footprint in the state. I mean, that'll do a high-level overview demo of the camera portion of the platform that we have for Veracata. Does that sound okay for everybody? Perfect. All right. Let me know once I share my screen here for you guys. Is it coming through okay for you guys?
Yes.
Perfect. Like I said, any questions, feel free to stop me. So a little bit about Veracata, for anybody who hasn't heard about us. So we are a physical security manufacturer. We take care of everything under the sun as of now, I mean with cameras, video security, access control alarms, environmental sensors, you name it. I'm calling, like I said, over from San Mateo. And that's where our HQ is, we just moved into a brand-new building, which is amazing. And then the reason why I put some of our investors on here, Sequoia, Siemens, Miratec, these are the individuals who basically invested in like the Ubers and Facebooks prior to them becoming, you know, Uber and the Facebook that we know today. So to have their vote at conference in us is amazing, so super happy to have them on our team. You know, a little bit about the company, I say this, and we are the fastest-growing physical security manufacturer in the world. We have offices now, I'm calling you from our headquarters in San Mateo, we have offices now in Utah, in Texas. Newest offices are in Phoenix, Arizona, Tampa Bay, Florida, Nashville now has an office, and then London and Australia as well. So we're growing pretty quickly here. The goal of our company is basically to create the most modern enterprise physical security system building management, if you will, and make it as scalable as possible. You know, one of the individuals, one of our founders, his name is Hans Robinson. He co, he basically founded Maraki, I'm not sure if anyone in the room is familiar with Maraki. It's another manufacturer that takes care, takes care of anything with technology, cameras, cabling, networking, and because of, and he sold that to Cisco for about 1.2 billion dollars. And because of his experience with Maraki, he realized there was a gap in the industry when it came to building management and security for schools, municipal buildings, corporate buildings, things like that, and that's how Veracata was born. Now, the best analogy that I like to give people when it comes to Veracata is years ago, right on your bedside table or your desk, you would probably have something like a PC computer, right, with the big huge back on it that we all got used to, or you would have, you know, a notepad and pen, an alarm clock, flashlight. What else would you have? You know, I mean, sometimes even a level, like the list goes on of all the different devices you would have on your desk. And now, I would imagine almost every single person in that room has an iPhone, maybe an Android, is that right?
Yes.
Okay, so it's, so now, it's just all those devices that you used to have, it's now just under one single pane of glass, right, under that one for your phone manages everything. And that's Veracata's vision when it comes to security. You have access control, cameras, sensors, guest management now is huge, so all that under one single pane of glass is opposed to managing different platforms. This, I won't get too much in the weeds on, but this is what we've seen when it comes to like an older architecture system, you have an IP camera going into a switch for power. And then what happens is you have the NVRs and the servers, those recording and storage devices that you use to monitor mainly on a local network. Seems like a lot of times if people are able to access remotely, you know, you're poking holes in the firewall, which will result sometimes in cybersecurity issues and things like that. So this is, you know, when it comes to this system, nothing necessarily completely wrong with it, but it does come with some risk and then a lack of reliability when you have, you know, NVR servers, which are a little bit costly because you have to keep buying more servers because there's limited storage, things like that. This is the same thing, just showing you basically through an access control view of like what it would take for the older system. This is Veracata's vision and how we're working with the state of West Virginia and obviously all over the world now. So with Veracata, there's no more servers, no more NVRs, we get rid of those, and all you're having is basically the device, we'll call it the camera, which is an industrial-grade solid-state storage device, just means it's a tough piece of hardware that's actually recording and storing the footage on the camera itself. And what it's doing is it's sending, we'll call it thumbnails, encrypted thumbnails through the cloud to a centralized management system. The reason why I say centralized management system, because you'll always be able to access your footage the same way you have in the past on your local network, we'll never interrupt that, that will always remain the same. But now, because we're encrypting your footage in transit and that rest, you will be able to access footage, you, meaning whoever the admin, admin or org admin would be chief, if you want to access it, the list goes on, from whether you're at your desk, or if you are at home on your iPad, or your computer, or your cellphone, or if you're visiting me here in California, you'll be able to access live footage, historical footage, whatever, whatever you need to access for the use case, you'll be able to do it and everything's secure. And the biggest question I normally get at this point would be, Max, what about the bandwidth? We have to, we're concerned about that, obviously, if it's a multipurpose building, there's a lot of people in here, how does that work? Because this is a hybrid cloud solution, we're only using about twenty to fifty kilobits per second, which is like sending an email, so we're not tapping into your bandwidth at all. Any questions so far? I can't really see on the screen for you guys, I just want to make sure.
No questions. Yeah, we're good.
Okay, I'm sorry, thank you. Now, this is, basically, this is our footprint as far as, like I said, state local education in the state of West Virginia, currently involved with thirty other fifty-five counties in their school districts, and over twenty different law enforcement agencies and municipalities across the state. Biggest thing that I like to share here, I shared this with a few people there with Sheri and with Chief is, it's a community-based approach when it comes to Veracata. You know, if we're working with, number one, we'll talk about like a county first, if it's a county or a city, we know that if there's incidents that are occurring within a city, the city line is not going to deter, you know, crime or whatever the incident may be happening from crossing that city line within that county. So the more cities are involved within the county, the more secure the county becomes. And at the same time, if we have, for example, if we have a school system that is involved with us, obviously, we want to make sure that the students' top priority are as safe as they can be when they get dropped off, but if there's something that's occurring, we want to make sure that the local PD as well is ready to respond and knows how to navigate the system. So we want to make sure that the police department, sheriff's office, they're well-equipped with Veracata as well, to make sure that they can receive the information and vice versa. If we have a municipality or a police department, we want to make sure we get the schools involved. So it's a community-based approach, this has been something that I, you know, when I joined the team, as far as the West Virginia team, this was something that I wanted to, you know, be my initiative, I know the issues that have, that have been brought up in the state of West Virginia, we want to bring as much visibility as we possibly can to our first responders and law enforcement agencies, so we can make sure that, you know, they have context, they're not going into anything blind, and they can be as, as safe and secure and keep everybody as safe and secure as possible. Any questions on this? Okay, now, quick slide here, biggest reason why people love Veracata is again, the ease of use, biggest thing is that it's very easy to, we call it plug-and-play, takes like a Cat five, Cat six, just like a power-over-ethernet plug, and we're really good to go. The cameras are getting better over time, we're basically pushing firmware updates through the software, so the cameras are getting smarter as time goes on, and the scalability is huge. When it comes to, you know, whether you start with one camera, you start with access control, ten cameras, it doesn't matter, you can just add more cameras to this, and you're just adding it to your command center, which I'm going to walk you through here in a second. So the scalability, the ease of use, and the fact that these cameras get better over time. This slide, again, really quickly go over, just shows the scope of our, of our platform, it's not just the camera company anymore, I know this project is more so cameras. Lastly, right here, just shows the progression of Veracata over the past couple of years, we push firmware updates and constantly come out with new devices. And this is something, again, that's included in licensing, you guys will constantly get the new products, new hardware, new updates through the software that's included, there's no additional cost for anything like that. And then lastly, biggest questions that I normally get, hey, what, what type of warranty, what goes on with these cameras? We have a industry-leading ten-year hardware warranty, so if anything happened to these cameras, we drop ship a camera the next day, no questions asked, and that's for ten years. You can add as many users as necessary, so we want to get all the deputies and chief on there, we want to get, obviously, the people in the municipal building, we want to get the city manager involved, you can add as many users that we need, firmware updates constantly pushed through the software there, total cost of ownership, very predictable renewal cost. And we can go over that here in a second, but just want to make sure we dive into that. Any questions here before we go into the demo?
No.
Perfect, okay, now, this is the fun stuff, so we call this commands, we call this command, it's a command center, literally, you'll be able to customize your tiles here with whatever you actually want to see, whether it be within a building or within the city. One thing you'll be able to see as well, obviously, there'll be multiple buildings that are going to have deployments of cameras, you'll be able to navigate different sites here and get real-life feeds. So if we wanted to go to, let's say, our London office, here's our live feeds here, again, using your imagination, if it's, you know, the annex building, the courthouse, you know, the police station, things like that. London, you can go to, let's say, Salt Lake City, nothing exciting here, but you'll be able to navigate different sites there, and then we'll go into our map view, so go into California, you can see our two little offices here, this is our brand-new HQ. First thing I want to point out, again, using our imagination, for you guys, is all cameras are lit up in green, that means they're healthy, our cameras are recording, they're storing footage, we're in great shape. If by any, at any point, you get a yellow camera like this right here, whoever is on that predetermined or, you know, pre-designated list will basically already have a text message by the time you see this, saying, hey, chief, camera facing East Fourth Avenue is down, or it's updating, we're on it. Because ninety-five percent of the issues that may actually come up with these cameras will be software-based, and we actually have a team that's here twenty-four-seven monitoring these things, and they hop on these alerts that happen right away. If at any time, something happens, you see this camera that's yellow and you don't have a text message already, you can use a help bar. Obviously, you can search any article in the world that you want to make any adjustments to the camera, we have it, but the coolest thing is you actually have a human being, there's no computer, there's no automated response, it's someone just like myself, a little bit more on the technical side, but they are sitting here waiting to respond to you, and the most you'll wait is five minutes. And the other side of that, like I said, the other five percent hardware, you're covered with a ten-year warranty, so if anything happens to the hardware of these cameras, we're dropshipping you a camera the next day. And then just so you can see this, guys, these are live, these are live feeds, so again, using your imagination here, if you're navigating the street view, cameras that are deployed amongst the city or in a municipal building, you'll be able to tap into all live feeds. Now, what we'll do is, this will be more so useful in this, in cases of like buildings, we use this for housing authorities, school campuses, things like that, it's a floor plan view. You'll see different cameras set up around the building, these are live feeds. And then just so I touch on this, these are just our environmental sensors, if you were wondering what the different design is, you can see different things that our sensors are going to basically monitor for you. Different settings on the floor plan that we've used for cities and housing authorities is going to be first and foremost, motion detection. So what you'll see here is different areas that are radiating, and that's showing you that the cameras pick up motion in the field of view of that camera. Biggest use case is that per camera that you install and you set up on your sites, you can actually set triggers. So let's say if you have an evidence room, for example, and there should be no motion occurring between the hours of, let's say, eleven PM and five AM, you can set a trigger on that, and basically, if there is motion that's occurring in that room, you're going to get a video ver, a text message to, obviously, that predetermined list with a video verification of what that actual motion is, if it's a book falling, not a big deal, if there's someone that's in there that shouldn't be in there, obviously, we want to act on that. So you're going to be able to set those motion alerts. Then we have an historical heat map, this is used a lot when it comes to housing authorities, we work with a couple of them, you know, there is congregating happening in the back alley, and there's some shady, you know, shady activity, we'll call it, that's, that's occurring, a proactive approach that we've had people take is that they will basically have their onsite deputy do an extra round that evening to kind of disperse that group before calling it a night. And in the same, on another use case we've had, because this was created during COVID times, is if there's multiple meetings, let's say like this, a city council meeting that's occurring, and you can see, normally, you'd actually see areas in which there's more congregating happening, you'll be able to have maybe your janitorial team come in and do an extra layer of cleaning for you guys, just to be safe. Any questions, feel free to stop me. Okay, perfect, and now what we'll do is we're going to tap into our live feed. So right here, this is normally what I would ask, and I've heard many, many horror stories of situations in which people have, an incident occurs, they need to go back and find footage, what we, and at that point, I mean, we've heard things with NVRs. Okay, I'm sorry, got it, thank you. Now, this is, basically, this is our footprint as far as, like I said, state local education in the state of West Virginia. Currently involved with thirty of the fifty-five counties in their school districts. And over twenty different law enforcement agencies and municipalities across the state. Biggest thing that I'd like to share here, I showed this to a few people there with, with, with Sherry and with, with Chief is, it's a community-based approach when it comes to Verkata. You know, if we're working with, number one, we'll talk about like a county first, if it's a county or a city. We know that if there's incidents that are occurring within a city, the city line is not going to deter, you know, crime or whatever the incident may be happening, from crossing that city line within that county. So the more cities are involved within the county, the more secure the county becomes. And at the same time, if we have, for example, if we have a school system that is involved with us. Obviously, we want to make sure that the, the students' top priority are as safe as they can be when they get dropped off. But if there's something that's occurring, we want to make sure that the local PD as well is ready to respond and knows how to navigate the system. So we want to make sure that the P, the police department, sheriff's office, they're well-equipped with Verkata as well. To make sure that they can receive the information and vice versa, if we have a municipality or a police department, we want to make sure we get the schools involved. So it's a community-based approach. This has been something that I, I, you know, when I joined the team is as far as the West Virginia team. This was something that I wanted to, you know, be my initiative. I know the issues that have, that have been brought up in the state of West Virginia, we want to bring as much visibility as we possibly can to our first responders and law enforcement agencies, so we can make sure that, you know, they have context, they're not going in anything blind, and they can be as, as safe and secure and keep everybody as safe and secure as possible. Any questions on this? Okay, now, quick slide here. Biggest reason why people love Verkata is again, the ease of use. Biggest thing is that it's very easy to, we call it plug and play. Takes like a Cat five, Cat six, just like a power over ethernet plug. And, and we're really good to go. The cameras are getting better over time. We're basically pushing firmware updates through the software, so the cameras are getting smarter as time goes on. And the scalability is huge. When it comes to, you know, whether you start with one camera, you start with access control ten cameras, it doesn't matter, you can just add more cameras to this. And you're just adding it to your command center, which I'm going to walk you through here in a second. So the scalability, the ease of use, and the fact that these cameras get better over time. This slide, again, really quickly go over, just shows the, the scope of our, of our platform, it's not just the camera company anymore, I know this project is more so cameras. Lastly, right here, just shows the progression of Verkata over the past couple of years. We push firmware updates and constantly come out with new devices. And this is something, again, that's included in licensing. You guys will constantly get the new products, new hardware, or new updates through the software that's included, there's no additional cost for anything like that. And then lastly, biggest questions that I normally get, hey, what, what type of warranty, what goes on with these cameras? We have a industry-leading ten-year hardware warranty, so if anything happens to these cameras, we drop ship a camera the next day, no questions asked, and that's for ten years. You can add as many users as necessary. So we want to get all the deputies and, and chief on there, we want to get, obviously, the people in the municipal building, we want to get the city manager involved. You can add as many users that we need. Firmware updates constantly pushed through the software there. Total cost of ownership, very predictable renewal cost. And we can go over that here in a second, but just want to make sure we dive into that. Any questions here before we go into the, the demo? Perfect, okay. Now, this is the fun stuff, so we call this commands, we call this command, it's a command center, literally. You'll be able to customize your tiles here with whatever you actually want to see, whether it be within a building or within the city. One thing you'll be able to see as well, obviously, there'll be multiple buildings that are going to have deployments of cameras. You'll be able to navigate different sites here and get real-life feeds, so if we wanted to go to, let's say, our London office, here's our live feeds here. Again, using your imagination, if it's, you know, the annex building, the courthouse, you know, the police station, things like that. London, you can go to, let's say, Salt Lake City, nothing exciting here, but you'll be able to navigate different sites there. And then we'll go into our map view, so go into California, you can see our two little offices here, this is our brand-new HQ. First thing I want to point out, again, using our imagination for you guys, is all cameras are lit up in green. That means they're healthy, our cameras are recording, they're storing footage, we're in great shape. If by any, at any point, you get a yellow camera like this right here, whoever is on that predetermined or, you know, pre-designated list will basically already have a text message by the time you see this, saying, hey, chief, camera facing East Fourth Avenue is down, or it's updating, we're on it. Because ninety-five percent of the issues that may actually come up with these cameras will be software-based. And we actually have a team that's here twenty-four-seven monitoring these things, and they hop on these alerts that happen right away. If at any time, something happens, you see this camera that's yellow and you don't have a text message already, you can use a help bar. Obviously, you can search any article in the world that you want to make any adjustments to the camera, we have it. But the coolest thing is you actually have a human being, there's no computer, there's no automated response, it's someone just like myself. Little bit more on the technical side, but they are sitting here waiting to respond to you, and the most you'll wait is five minutes. And the other side of that, like I said, the other five percent hardware, you're covered with a ten-year warranty. So if anything happens to the hardware of these cameras, we're drop shipping you a camera the next day. And then just so you can see this, guys, these are live, these are live feeds, so again, using your imagination here, if you're navigating the street view, cameras that are deployed amongst the city or in a municipal building, you'll be able to tap into all live feeds. Now, what we'll do is, this will be more so useful in this, in cases of like buildings, we use this for housing authorities, school campuses, things like that, it's a floor plan view. You'll see different cameras set up around the building, these are live feeds. And then just so I touch on this, these are just our environmental sensors, if you were wondering what the different design is, you can see different things that our sensors are going to basically monitor for you. Different settings on the floor plan that we've used for cities and housing authorities is going to be first and foremost, motion detection. So what you'll see here is different areas that are radiating, and that's showing you that the cameras pick up motion in the field of view of that camera. Biggest use case is that per camera that you install and you set up on your sites, you can actually set triggers. So let's say if you have an evidence room, for example, and there should be no motion occurring between the hours of, let's say, eleven PM and five AM, you can set a trigger on that. And basically, if there is motion that's occurring in that room, you're going to get a video ver, a text message to, obviously, that predetermined list with a video verification of what that actual motion is. If it's a book falling, not a big deal, if there's someone that's in there that shouldn't be in there, obviously, we want to act on that. So you're going to be able to set those motion alerts. Then we have an historical heat map, this is used a lot when it comes to housing authorities, we work with a couple of them. You know, there is congregating happening in the back alley, and there's some shady, you know, shady activity, we'll call it, that's, that's occurring. A proactive approach that we've had people take is that they will basically have their onsite deputy do an extra round that evening to kind of disperse that group before calling it a night. And in the same, on another use case we've had, because this was created during COVID times, is if there's multiple meetings, let's say like this, a city council meeting that's occurring. And you can see, normally, you'd actually see areas in which there's more congregating happening. You'll be able to have maybe your janitorial team come in and do an extra layer of cleaning for you guys, just to be safe. Any questions, feel free to stop me. Okay, perfect. And now what we'll do is we're going to tap into our live feed. So right here, this is normally what I would ask, and I've heard many, many horror stories of situations in which people have incident occurs, they need to go back and find footage. What we, and at that point, I mean, we've heard things with NVR systems that it's going to take anywhere from, you know, two to four hours to find a two-to-ten-minute clip. So what we've done here is, first, you have a live feed of our front door. Underneath here, you have historical footage, and these are all thumbnails. So we can adjust time and date if there's an incident that occurs. So I'm just moving this around my screen here, so I can make sure I see what I'm doing. If we want to go back in time, back to last month, whatever's necessary for the use case, these clips underneath, right now, are in twenty-four-hour clips. But whatever the use case permits, if you need format, four hours, if you need ten-minute clips, whatever's necessary, you'll be able to do. Just so you guys can see the power of this, we'll keep it under twenty-four hours. So in the past, we've seen incidents where, like I said, two to four hours to find a two-to-ten-minute clip. Right now, what you're able to do is this is the last twenty-four hours, let's go to today. In this, can you guys see how it's kind of a black or gray area on the bottom, and there's blue tick marks in other areas? Okay, perfect, so that's showing you the actual motion that's occurring in the field of view of the camera. So that way, if there's an incident, you don't have to necessarily waste your time in this area. So in the next, in the last twenty-four hours, we're going to scroll through footage in a matter of seconds. And you can see the green boxes are showing you the human beings in the field of view, and then what you'll get on other cameras, obviously, will be a yellow box around every vehicle. So those four hours to take, to, to find two minutes, those are gone. Now, what we'll do is we're going to come up to a real, a real incident that occurred, I spoke to a school that was having a lot of theft, you know, there's people stealing laptops apparently, and just stealing out of vehicles. So they said, Max, what do we do? If there's someone who stole a laptop out of a red Honda, we don't know when it occurred on Wednesday, but how, how, how do we find this clip? So what we'll do is we're going to go, again, we're going to go to Wednesday. Once we select our day, we create a motion plot box, again, using your imagination, around the red Honda. And now we want to make sure it's not necessary to find if a dog walks by, but if every person, we want to see every person. Our cameras will run analytics, and it's going to pull every clip of an actual person that came in contact through that motion plot box of the vehicle. Pretty quick, lot of big buttons, and it's super easy to use. Another way that we've used this is going to be, let's say, you had an eyewitness for this situation that happened. And they're like, hey, we did see somebody that was hanging out around that parking lot, didn't seem to be a student, and was there from hours of, let's say, eight to ten. Again, you'll customize the time and date, and we'll say, the eyewitness said it looked like there was a person in a red shirt, and they appeared to be male. Again, our analytics are going to run for you, or obviously, this might be Chief's scope of work here, and it's going to run and pick up anybody in the field of view. Hopefully, this will run a little bit quicker here for us. That appears to be male, and wearing something that our cameras are picking up that looks to be a red shirt. There we go. And then we have a few layers of this, but again, obviously, you can imagine in the use case of how quickly this is going to be able to work in an investigation purpose. Lastly, on this, I want to show you guys a person of interest. So again, housing authorities we've worked with have band lists. We have, obviously, if there's theft happening, if there's vandalism, obviously, Chief's probably got a list of people that he's working with. If there's an incident that occurs, whether it be on the municipal side, let's say there's somebody who's doing vandalism in the city. If Chief has a mugshot of this individual, what he'll be able to do is create a person of interest, so he'll be able to create a profile. Upload the image, title, let's say this is our individual. And every time this individual, once we check this bell right here, this will basically create a person of interest. Chief will get a text message with a video verification anytime this individual is seen on any camera that's on his command. Most of the time, we'll probably get an alert within about thirty-six seconds of this person being seen in the field of view of that camera. And then lastly, right here, biggest use case, this is going to be more so, whether it be working with the school system or working with a municipal, municipal building, if there is a situation where we need to not only, you know, find footage, but maybe share footage in real time. In the past, I'm not sure if you guys have gone through this, I've heard situations where it's downloading to a flash drive, which takes some time, and then there's a software that needs to be uploaded. Now, if there's an incident that occurs, again, this is, you know, whether it be a school system or a municipal building, if there's somebody who is, you know, a disgruntled, you know, citizen in the area, whatever the situation may be, and you need to share footage quickly, we're going to be able to now share footage, this is going to be sharing a live feed, you can share via phone, email, however it is that you find necessary at the time. You'll give them access to just this one feed or all the video features, and I'm going to give you guys access for the next day. Is there anybody who's willing to actually test this out on their cellphone? I would just be sending you a link and you'll be able to kind of navigate through all the cameras that we have on our site for the next day. No prob, yeah, if you got, if, if, if anyone's coming, let me know, I'll just type in your cellphone, that way you can kind of get it and show everybody in the room as well. I can send it to, I know Chief's done this before. Yes, sir? Yes, sir, perfect, okay, so I just add and I'll send that now. Let us know when that comes in there, sir. And as that's coming through for you, did that come through yet on your end? Perfect, feel free, like I said, as I'm going through this, obviously, I want you to pay attention, but feel free to take it, like, take a look as you're navigating through there. But you can imagine the use case, if there's an incident that's occurring, the ability to find that piece of, or share that clip will not only provide more safety and security for those who are involved in the incident, but now Chief and his deputies will get more context to what they're coming into, they're not coming in blind. They're going to have more ideas, they're going to have more visibility in the situation, so they can resolve the situation much quicker, and hopefully, make sure, obviously, they're keeping everybody safe. I've had a number of conversations with people in the state, I had a conversation with Lieutenant Kale over in Philippi, telling me about the incident that occurred years and years ago, I think it was like six or seven years ago at one of the schools. And we talked about, obviously, the use case of being able to have eyes in the campus if something happens. Just let me know what your thoughts are there, but I want to show you guys this, this is more of an investigation purpose. But this is historical, this is a historical clip. And what we're able to do here is, let's say it's an investigation, this is on Fourth Avenue. Let's say, again, we'll keep it with that idea of someone stealing laptops from, from that red Honda. Now, what we're going to do is kind of write a story, and we'll do a multi-camera playback, is what we call it. So if there's an incident that occurs, here's your red Honda, there he goes. Now, what we're able to do is, the incident, here's the thief stole from the red Honda, he's coming down, there he is, right there, coming down Fourth Avenue. And then we'll say, gets in his truck and turns left on Clermont. So now we're doing this, writing a story, and we're going to be able to archive this clip. And you're going to be able to title it, again, right, like thief or, you know, vandalism being done. Once you add a tag, right, like stolen laptop, once you add the tag and you go to your archives, and once you archive a clip, just so everybody knows, it is yours indefinitely, it's saved. It'll never go away. Now, any type of, this is where your archives will be, any clip that has a tag on it, like bad guy, will automatically go into a folder, so when it comes time to go to the court or whatever, when you have to have the, the evidence, it's not like you have to scroll through each and every one of these and try and navigate and click and save, they're all going to be saved under one folder for you. Click right here, play the clip, and you'll be able to see the watermark in the top-left corner. Date, time, site, location, everything you'll need to make sure that it obviously follows legal compliance and regulation. And then lastly, of course, you can download this and share this the same exact way we shared a live feed. Any questions, thoughts, concerns so far, I want to make sure. Okay, okay, you got it. Lastly, I'll go here, just so you guys can see this, we're going to go right here, I'm going to search for our garage camera. In the same way, just want to show you guys our analytics, the same way we did on, on a person. Let's say there's an incident, like we said, right, that we saw the thief stole the laptop, gets into a white truck and drives down Clermont, what we're able to do here is go ahead and we're going to search for the vehicle. And we look, it looks like it was a white truck. So our analytics will run and pick up anything that resembles the white truck. Biggest question we normally get is, hey, can it decipher the difference? So let's say now, the person got into a red, let's go into a car. And again, our analytics are going to run. We work with Jason Eads over in Somersville, he works with the police department, there was a call that came in a while back about a white truck that stole a washer and dryer. And within twenty minutes of that call coming in, they had, it was a white truck with a trailer. Twenty minutes of that call coming in, they nailed the guy with the washer and dryer on the trailer, because they paired this type of context camera with their license plate recognition cameras. With, with our license plate recognition cameras, I should say. So going into the license plate recognition, just so you guys can see this, this is where you would take a look at your LPRs. There's two portions to our license plate recognition software. The first part is underneath, we call it the fuzzy search. Chief knows this probably more than anybody else, including myself, but the odds of you getting an eyewitness that has every single digit on the license plate probably slim to none, if, if it ever happens at all. So what we're able to do is, if you have somebody who says, hey, you know, I did see something that came up with a, a G Y in the license plate. Here we go. We'll go G eight. Our analytics will run, and it's going to pull every clip of something that comes through resembling a G eight in the field of view, and you're going to be able to scroll through all these and run, so if there's example, a white truck, right, because there was somebody who was doing the, stole the laptop, gone to a white truck, now you know it's a white truck with a G eight, and you're going to be able to cross-reference through that search. The same time, just like a person of interest, we have a license plate of interest now. So the way that works is, let's say, whether it's an Amber Alert, a known stolen vehicle, a, a drug dealer, like whatever the incident may be, if you have the digits of that license plate, you can enter it in, check this box here. Now, just like the person of interest, whoever's on that list will get a text message with a video verification of that vehicle going through that LPR. We work with Whitehall PD, Glenn is one of our guys over there, and he actually trialed out our license plate recognition camera for about three months. And what he did was, during that time, he actually got two of those firmware updates, how I said, our cameras get better over time. So one of which that, again, he paid nothing for, it's just included in that license. We first were only able to register license plates going twenty miles per hour, now it's updated to forty to forty-five miles per hour, we can register license plates. And the second was this actual license plate of interest, so what he did was he put his truck's plate on this, and anytime he drove underneath the boathouse over there, he got a text message with a video of his truck going underneath it every, every time within thirty seconds. Any questions here? Okay, perfect, lastly, this is more of the backend stuff, but I want to make sure I go through this. This is huge, you can have as many users as you want on this, or as you need, obviously. And then the next thing is going to be groups, you'll be able to add as many groups, so Chief, obviously, is going to have his own, you know, abilities that he's going to want to navigate on the platform, then maybe he has a group for deputies, there's another group for people in the municipal building, the list goes on, but once you add someone to that group, they will have the permissions that you've given to that group. It's incredibly granular, and no one will ever see your footage other than you, and it's completely secure. Even if an incident does come up, in which you're like, hey, Max, you know, we're having issues, one of our cameras are down, like, something's going on here. For us to actually access your cameras, you have to go in and provide us an actual support token that will give us access, and then that token is then revoked once we resolve the issue. Just want to make sure you guys know how secure that process would be. Now, that is, I would say, the meat and potatoes of the, you know, the camera portion of the platform. I want to make sure I kind of kept it focused, I know you guys have a meeting to get to, but I want to make sure I gave you guys as much as I could on the cameras. Biggest reasons why people, you know, love Verkata, and it seems like in West Virginia, a lot of people are, are making that move, would be, again, the ease of use with our camera system. Plug and play, you know, we work with Mayor Marco in the city of Elkins, and he calls it big buttons and easy to use, I keep trying to use that term. Next is going to be the scalability. Doesn't matter if you have one camera, a hundred cameras, a thousand cameras, the bandwidth isn't going to be touched. And it's easy, like I said, the, the ease of use, and then total cost of ownership is huge. When people go through this process, we have the vast majority of our people that we work with have the hardware and the license, they go with that ten-year license. The reason why they do that is because once that initial purchase is made, there's nothing, there's no monthly fees, no hidden costs, maintenance fees, up, upgrade fees, you won't pay anything for a decade after that. And most, obviously, it's not necessarily the same with other platforms. And you obviously have access to myself, our team, our install team, and our solutions engineers as well, we're all kind of all hands on deck to make sure everyone's trained, knows how to use the system, A to Z. And then I can, like, oh, go ahead, sorry. Not a problem. If there's any questions, thoughts, concerns, like I said, I'm here as a resource. You know, let me know whatever you guys need, but that's it for me today. Absolutely, absolutely, have a great meeting, and like I said, we'll be in touch, and if you need anything, just holler. Have a good one, guys.
We have the presentation on the agenda, I'm assuming that this may be on a future agenda for action. To see the capabilities of this
Obviously, I regularly see and my thoughts on this Verkata system is unlike anything I've ever seen before. Most recent time I can think of, the video was from the middle school camera. A two-minute clip roughly, and if we were hours trying to find it. So, you, you know, there was definitely some huge benefits to this, and like I said, it's, it's, and we were able to watch the clip then, but we don't, we don't have direct access to the school cameras. So we had to wait, it was a couple days later before we actually got the video itself. You know, I mean, it doesn't have to be part of this, and it's a whole process, but so, so I think
Well, I think what if there's a so-called turn that situation? Probably would have been solved within hours.
Yes, absolutely. Because in the, in that quote, there's one of the cameras that's in that quote could actually be on the city building. But, the one of the cameras that are at the building, I think there's, there's very few that are inside the building. The majority of them are outside the village, but there, there's one that would point directly at that North River West Second Street intersection. And then the ones that are for the railways would obviously be at all the intersections, and the one at Second, then you would include the license plate.
Well, I think the reason why Chief and I started checking into this and going down this path was as a result of the ARPA funding meeting.
Sorry, Chief. The reason, I think, the reason why Chief and I started going down this path and, and researching some of these camera systems is because of the ARPA funding meeting that we had, and the public requested cameras. There were several citizens who requested the cameras, so that's the reason why we researched, and this is what we have. And I'm impressed with with this system as well.
Thoughts from other counselors? I think a lot, a lot of the recent vandalism things, bicycles being taken, getting run incidents, I think, you know, this is something to be considered. And, you know, I think it also benefits our downtown businesses as well. We must everybody.
Yeah, I thought it's pretty spectacular, I thought as well. Uh, at my place, we have a system we actually used yesterday. And I can go in and pick a specific time and then run back and forth and watch the screen, fast forward, rewind. I exported and transferred right over into a thumb drive and all that, but nothing like that. Would have, you know, had to take a little, it was like that, so. About a three months.
You know, and a lot of times we, we do find ourselves, you know, if there's an incident, say what happens near the oil spot. So we'll come and we'll grab eight, 10 hours of video and then somebody has to sit and just watch that. You know, until we, you know, find what we're looking for, we're satisfied that what we're looking for isn't fair.
I do have one question. Are we required to sign each about? In this, you know, lots.
I would imagine we won't.
I don't know. That's a good question.
I don't know, I don't know any where it does have cameras that does not have some type of signage or surveillance.
If we have to, we definitely.
Or some of the person on the other side. Uh, cameras on personal property, protecting personal businesses or personal things that I don't have any problem with. Public cameras, I'm completely against. I think it's completely since I, I just don't like the idea of everywhere you go, there's cameras. I know it's the way it is these days, but I don't really like the way things are these days. So, um, I will be against it the whole way, I'm sure. But I, I just, I'm not, it's just not my way of living, knowing there's something watching me all, it's not me.
Well, it sounds like we do have an interest in having further discussion about this, which may or may not lead to action.
Can I just share a few thoughts, I guess? And that, this is more along the lines of ways, ways forward. Yeah. Cost and budget, I think we That's what, that's what will happen to your camera. Where do you start? Where do you end? You know, when you start camera, I think that's an important question we've gotta ask ourselves as a, from a policy standpoint. And from a cost standpoint, I think these cameras are relatively affordable, right? Without the onboard maintenance costs or software costs, that's a good thing. But, you know, they do cost real money, right? Um, locations and scope, I talked a little bit about that, I guess, a little bit. And I just, one of the things I, ultimately, when you provide this level of surveillance or whatnot to businesses, that's a service you're providing as a city, right? So if you, you know, you pick a certain area you wanna surveil and provide that service to that business owner or those property owners, what do you say to the property owners if you don't put a camera on? I think that's an important question. You've gotta answer. You know, what's our policy? I think if you, if you're taking it more along the lines, or we're picking strategic points to, to help our police out solve investigations, that's different than providing protection to businesses, right? I'll say you can't use them for those purposes, but I think that's important. And, um, I guess, you know, the other, the other point I think we need to consider, and I'm kinda working on a different vein here, is the cameras are there, but there's a lot on the backend to get the cameras installed, right? You've gotta have power sources. Um, you've gotta have some kind of internet connectivity. You talked about their, the power of the ethernet cable. Well, that ethernet requires some kind of hook in to some kind of internet hub or switch, is the term we use. Um, so I've, I've been speaking with a broadband company, a city supplier, our IT people have, have a relationship with. So we're setting up a meeting and talk about kind of creating a what, I guess, the first phase, maybe like a smart city in the sense of being able to have different wireless hubs, which could feed our infrastructure, but also feed the public internet system if we wanted to so choose. I think this camera conversation kinda gets wrapped into that, right? Because these are one of the features that you can integrate into that public wi- wireless system. You don't have to run a hard cable to every location where you're trying to hook up a camera. If you have wireless node, you know, from the wireless node, you just plug into your camera and vice versa. So I think from, from our standpoint, what we talked about initially, we've got a real need at our facilities for cameras. And I think you guys have a budget just for cameras alone for kind of city buildings and stuff. And I think that we could share in another conversation. And I guess at that point, I don't think, but I don't think putting cameras in the city building really answers the public's concern that we had at ARPA, right? That we just installed cameras, there isn't doing a trick, for lack of a better word. So I think with that, yeah. Really from our standpoint, I think we need those, for lack of a better word, first. Um, but with that cost, what's our appetite to go further, I guess? But, you know, I still wait for the next discussion, or say, where, how far are we looking at? How much is the city trying to cover? So that's, that's my thoughts.
Now, I, I do want, I think it's important to add, but these are not going to be monitored in real time. They will be used as investigative tool, a hack for the fact. Um, I agree with what the city manager says. While, while they will be a great investigative tool, wherever we place them around the city, I, I do think that our, we need the first and foremost capability. And I don't know, Mike, you know, agree, I, I think I would consider maybe a camera or two. We should be protecting our assets first and, and then build from there. Um, and especially with this system being, you know, I know that the schools have gotten in some issues in the past where they said, well, we're only gonna do half the building now. And we'll do the other half next year. And when, when next year comes, there's a whole system that's compatible with what they put in last year. Where this system that's, you know what I mean, it's always gonna be able to build off of. And so I, I think that's a, that's an idea. As we start with, you know, cause essentially this, the office, the city room, I mean, could be done tomorrow. You know, because the, the, the internet, the power, everything's there. Um, and I'm still, I'm still working to get the quotes and see what, and find out for sure what exactly it is we need to do to put these intersections. As far as internet power, or we're gonna need to hire an electrician. It's not, you know, it's not gonna be a good thing. Um, and so those are things that we still, there's still the irony now. And what holes can we put them on? That's another, you know, problem we need to check.
Something else I was making on, on line, but it's, you know, we're looking, we're looking to try. Uh, I'm sorry, we're looking to try and finance. So if you can put that out there for your annexation period, that might be a good way for us to get people to come in and say, hey, we got protections in service. 24/7. I know it's down the road, but I'm sorry.
Um, I'll be able to protect in our assets and general surveillance of the population and, and areas around towns, two different things. I have no problem with asset management, asset protection. Maybe even something to do with intersection or something to that effect, but just, just the overall broad spectrum of putting cameras all over town to monitor everything. I'm, I'm completely against that. I mean, cameras is awful in there for actually hunting stuff.
The, uh, the, the plans are in that proposal, that only places cameras, that's to place cameras at the city building and to place them only at intersections.
We don't have the air power to
to watch them, yeah, they
24/7.
And it's probably like New York City's, you know, real-time crime center.
Right. Yeah, I appreciate it. It's just utilized for investigations.
But who releases these things whenever we start with that? I mean, that's the one thing I'm, I'm a little bit skeptical about. I mean, it starts out bad and oh my god, we've got another, oh, I mean, we can put more cameras. And that's the thing I worry about. So I've got, that's just another perspective. I'm, I'm not trying to rain on everybody's parade.
Don't feel that bad at all.
Lady of Brent says, may, may this is my grave.
Okay, so we will move on to reports. The next meeting dates are listed for the cemetery board. Um, the historic landmark commission, there's a change. Their next meeting is Thursday, June 16th at 5:00 PM. Neighborhood watch, the next meeting there is actually their thickness. Uh, on August the 5th at 5:00 PM. And that will be at the home of Betty and Billy Brooks. Everyone is invited. August 5th at 5:00 PM. I think it's a Friday. Uh, there are still two available positions on the Western Plains Commission. I think the requirements are that you have to be a, a city of western resident for three years. Uh, there's also an available position on the Board of Examen Appeals plus an alternate. And the cemetery board director's report, the Wilma Tower report from Dee. She's still recovering. She did send me a message and state that she has several breaks. So I don't know if she's still in the hospital or home. So moving on to finance report. I updated your, um, later that there on, for May. Uh, it was not ready when we sent, done the packet, said that it's for the May. Um, yeah. Thank you. Yeah. If you all have any questions, I'll try to answer. Been pretty busy with the most of these that will be going out around July the 1st. I, um, yeah. If you, if you all have any questions or anything. How are we in touch? Are we pretty good? I think we are after, um, speaking with them this evening. I think it's all good.
John Strees is John Strees is
it's your partner. Uh, can I get down the six trees as well?
Right, thank you.
It's a couple of things to do, I guess, with finance. Um, we're gonna talk budget revision. We have, the, the, ended the year budget revision through 3/15. We'll talk about that in a little bit. But then we'll have another budget revision for the new year immediately in July that we probably worked through. I think that's probably gonna be a, a multi-meeting process most likely, just, just cause I think setting our priorities are probably shoe, shoe-horns into our priority special, we, we wanna have. So um, those are just some, some dates that I suppose all have to be ratified. Coast 7th, I think, a little bit earlier, I think, the 15th of July, if I remember right, the Coast 7th project. But the other one is at the, at the revision is due at the end of July. So just thinking of that.
Thank you. Street Department?
You guys have my reporting there, you all guys?
You guys have my report in there. If you have any questions, I'll answer them. There's a couple of things I would just like to go across there. The very first one is this cleaning blacktop out of the drain behind the St. Pats. A gentleman come in and blacktop that driveway or that part from the St. Pats and just dumped his blacktop down on one of my drains and we're plugged up. They said he could be splattered over it and nothing moved down there. We dug on it for two and a half days. So with that being said, I will address this situation with him, which I already have. And he will be getting the bill for the time that he has spent on this. The other one is, uh, I'm down about halfway is removing that tree out of the Polk Creek Waterway on Siffel Drive. That one and then also the weeding along the Polk Creek Waterway. That will, will get our money back from that for Jim Roy through the membership. But anyway, he gets his money back each year for going back. So he also told us we could take that, uh, tree out of, uh, Central Drive. And the, uh, the big mess we had over on Wannan Street, I think we had that problem taken care of and it's back in place. If you all wanna drive around and sit, uh, land on this is very, very happy the way that it went in. The other one that we done was, uh, also the, the repair on the stop sign along First and Center. Um, there was a car accident there and we were wanting to go ahead and try to send our bill into their insurance and try to get our money back. Or I had to call the gentleman for uh, to fix the stop sign. We have to pay him for that. And the other thing is, is, uh, we did get the drain finished. It's not completely seated in yet. It's probably about 25 feet down in the, the mid-advent area there. It's on Turner, CrossFit. And from the video we went through there.
What's next?
I'm gonna tell you those guys were a part of. Thank you. That's all I have unless you all have any questions. Sixty. Again, uh, I think we're trying to finish up Randy's ward today. It's taking a little bit longer in that wood range. Because it's your work. We should finish up with Randy's ward probably by tomorrow afternoon. I was gonna hit Main Street one more time since we're having a car fest this weekend. And I'm just gonna try to do that and also, uh, uh, Water Street over there one more time.
There's a lot of good comments about this weekend.
They've worked yeah, Chad and the new temporarys work very hard. Gary Laddens. That's all, that's all I have unless you all have something from
I, I was told to convey whoever is watering the flowers, just wanted to make some job.
Exactly. We have two temporarys that we're working for. So we have, I, I just automated in this week. One will, uh, do it one weekend and then the next one will do it the next weekend. And then they do two hours on Saturday, two hours on Sunday. So the flyers will get more every day if they need.
But they, they wanted to make sure you told them to tell them that they're doing a good job.
I guarantee I will.
Keep doing a good job.
They do, they do.
Next, Police Department report.
The, uh, the reports in the back and I don't have a whole lot to add in addition to the report. Other than I will say that on May 4th, we did a, we conducted an operation with the Mountier Howie Interdiction. Well, let me see if I can get this right. The Mountier Howie Interdiction team. Um, it's made up of an officer from the State Police, from the Clutchford Police Department and the Bridgeport Police Department. And they're, they're given a state by jurisdiction. And so that's all they do really all day long is they just stop cars and try to find drugs. Um, so we invited them down, they came down and we did enforcement action with them by the saturation control. We were just, we had pre-designated areas or neighbor posts that we had compliance in. And we saturated those areas with, uh, police officers for, you know, a period of time, stopped cars. Uh, we did make six, I don't have all of them. Actually, I left the numbers on my desk. Uh, of the, you know, of the warnings and tickets. But I do know we made six of us that day. Um, the majority of them were for possession, so. And we'll do another operation then.
Thank you for initiating. Certain areas have gotten quiet. It's been reported. That must be why.
You know, I tell you, you got real quiet, real quick that day.
Thank you.
Also, we will have members going to, you know, service only there.
Thank you. Next, the Fire Department report.
I don't really have much either. You have to report as well as this month. That's pretty good, Rex, the fire.
I don't really have much either. You have to report it for us this month. That's pretty good. Rex and fire.
Any questions for Chief Saddle? Next, uh, Building Code zoning report. And I'd like to welcome Marty Lewis.
Thank you. I'm, I'm just doing my thing. This is my fourth day. So I'm still worried. But there's a report in there for May of the number of going permits issued for warnings. We continue to, to go around and, and check on high grass issue warnings. In the last couple of days, I have had apps, uh, lawn services going around and helping us up these lots for the pastor one. Of course, that, those fees will be attached to those laws except to the finish. And, uh, the old time beast of a building. We were able to work with D E P and V H R and get a waiver on after waiting another ten days. So they dropped off equipment there today. They'll be there in the morning in that building. Should be gone by tomorrow.
I have one question pertaining to the establishment. After it originally fell, I was there and still with the gentleman. And that's, yeah. Um, I thought they were going to pull that stuff like the next couple of days there.
Well, that's a couple of days before I start.
I know. I know. I was pretending to.
So, yeah, I'm, I'm not sure what the delay was there, but, uh, with the expiration and the purpose to do that, we jumped on it and got them to the agencies needed to waive that, got a new report. And, uh, we're actually like that.
Roma has a bureaucracy, not, not a two believer. That's the question. What we tried to do, when you do those emergency actions, you're not technically supposed to pull anything off that day. It's an emergency. So at that point, you've got to do your asbestos study and all that stuff. We try, we really push that to see if we could essentially not treat all those asbestos, try to cut down some of the costs. So and then, uh, the contractor themselves said, hey, Memorial Day is coming up here. We've got guys going on vacation, things of that nature. We really don't want to get in this mess before the holiday. So we can chant down the road, let the asbestos reports come through. It came back positive and hot for asbestos everywhere. So, uh, we're not going to build this. And I say everywhere, not literally everywhere, but.
It's a hot.
It's first enough where you can't sort it out essentially. Uh, so then at that point, the state came back and said, oh, I took more than ten days. So now you need to do, you know, you need to recertify yourself. We have to do that process. That's where already got one of the warnings at the top of the house. It was a good thing for us. So, yeah. We've given the contractor a couple of days.
So is it processed? You didn't have to do another quality or anything like that?
I don't, I'm not sure what this cost would be. I think there'll be some, some stuff like that, but usually the contractor builds that into their price, price range.
Any other questions for Mark? Do we know what we're doing in terms of, uh, collection on that side?
You may collect it for the costler or her. I don't get it, but I will.
You just keep us informed.
Yeah. It's one of those tricky things. It's in the tax sale process. I think I mentioned that before too. And, yeah, we've even got some question about where it's at in that process. If you know the state's website for it, it looks like there's been a buyer in the last couple of months. I say buyer recently because, okay, so it didn't go through.
I, I ended up calling down there and they actually didn't pay. They had the D on me. It said that it did. But, um, they have not actually. Versus probably won't shoot right.
But someone is ultimately responsible for that.
We, this, my question is, if that would have fell and hurt somebody, who would have been liable then? No.
We probably would have gotten detained with some kind of lawsuit there just because of our ability to code it worse. But I'm just speculating. I think ultimately the property is still in the hands of the owner. We've had this discussion with the state auditor, state office. The county club, that was technically still that owner's property, even though it was a tax lien essentially. That's what the auditor's office does. They sell for taxes. Nobody buys it. They kind of control it where it can't be sold unless you go through that process. But ultimately the owner's still in the building.
So technically at this point, the owner's still in the building.
That's obvious. But, and I say, but we're going to send that, that, that bill and whatever the state does with dreams at that point, if they don't pay, we'll place them in the property.
Second question to the court. So. Has anybody contacted the state office in terms of this?
I, we made an initial phone call. We've got the mega server. We've got that one end going up. Of course, we'd like to talk to them. I figured it would claim all has to take effect.
I, I will throw my. Yes. Thank you. Thank you, Mark. Come on in.
Now, this is the Western City Council meeting.
It's on the back. Are you here for a, a hearing of some sort?
Yeah.
The sheriff's office. It's in the, the newer building. Thank you.
Thank you, Chief. Thank you, Marty.
Thank you so much. Mr. Ser, Ser said, don't forget to come back.
Next, the attorney report.
As usual, a lot of stuff is intertwined with everything we talk about. Honestly, it just, it just hit me. I, I've been, it's been about what a month since we've given American legal our stuff, maybe no less than that. Nah, probably about a month, let's say. I haven't followed up with it as far as getting that particular town when they're going to get anything back to us. I didn't anticipate anything for three or four months just out of my dumb thinking. With no evidence backing it up, but I can try to get some kind of answer from them and see if they have any kind of timeline as far as when we can look to have to come back.
Thanks for the willingness, what you're doing. Thank you.
Is that all from now, Brian, until later in the meeting?
Yes.
Uh, City clerk, you have the report of. Business licenses in your package. There are five missing. I question the one at the bottom of the page. I need to. I think it's, it's still under investigation. The oil spot, Curtis Enterprises.
It was already passed.
And City Manager report.
I think I threw some thoughts for you on the packet there and some, some basic updates. I forget more than I remember around here. But first, let me just thank our staff for last month. Um, I was able to go out, out of state for a little bit and, you know, our, we've come a long ways in a year and a half. I'll say that. And we've got a really good team here. I mean, that about every individual sitting up here. They've really grabbed the bull by the horns and we're working hard because they're working hard and a lot of output for turning this shit around. So just really appreciate all of them. And I mean that, um, a couple of things that come to my mind that I wanted to, we're also going to discuss on. Uh, the planning commission, so the city attorney myself and a few members of the planning commission attended the Land Use Conference down in, uh, I sent them a couple of weeks back and I thought that was really good, good opportunity. I'm not sure we've ever set the planning commission on a trip anywhere. And, uh, that was good for, for those members and we're looking for two members there. But that was done with the intention to kind of springboard our comprehensive plan, um, planning commission meeting on June first. And they're going to start, uh, this planning process for making a plan. And that's going to involve a lot of public interaction. And I think that in a perfect world, council and the planning commission work together and those, those activities will be a part of that. So we'll get to inform. But, uh, that comprehensive plan, I think is due sometime in twenty fourteen or twenty fourteen, sorry. A little late. Uh, uh, so that's, that's what we're shooting for. But, uh, Dan Vaughn, the president, I think has some ambition to get that wrapped up in twenty twenty-three. So we'll try to do that. Just some, some white, white heart notes concert series. Uh, we had our first event at early parts of the, end of May. Uh, now we're having our second concert on Thursday evening at the park, right at the whole property there. And so I think it's Seth May or the Rachel Pranks that will be singing in the forefront. So, you know, please invite everybody. Let's bring your own chair a bit. Uh, the buck last one really went on a, for similar results. Carp Festival this weekend. So we, Parks, Parks and Rec Board has really worked hard, I think, uh, and then two or three of them that we had, right? It's a, the team effort and it worked really hard and we've got some sponsorships and a lot of credit to Second Saturdays and sharing the day with us and all the business sponsors. We're hoping, I don't think we've had a whole lot of registrations yet, but I think everybody's going to get the rest of it. Um, and, yep, and that'll be fine. And so if you want to fish, please, please get registered. Unless you catch the big one, we're going to stay ready this weekend. And then, uh, we've kind of missed it's paving. I think that's a big thing we need to update it out. The payers are going to be here in the next week, we think, right?
Yes, paving, they're going next week and we're going to go around and look and see what we have and they're getting hold of their, uh, melon people and we should be starting. Get mine next week, but it will be the next one. But we have to get the melon people in there first. But we do have quite a few streets that were.
So outside of that, I know we've got a couple of things we'll talk about, sort of shoe burning, rest of the meeting, but you got any questions? Oh, yeah. Shouldn't have said financial. The auditor was supposed to show up today and they didn't. So, uh, we're expecting them sometime this week. And it was a good day. We were really busy, uh, as of Monday. So we're thankful. We're, they may do, but they did come today. But, uh, we are in this for all of.
I have questions about the grass again. Um, I'm getting a lot of complaints about, um, cemetery, about the grass at Water Street, about the grass at the bridge. Um, and now whole property.
Well, Cole, we're still waiting on the signature of the agreement. So we're not going to step on.
We can't know it.
But I'm just.
Concert?
That's our, our objective. We were trying to get hold of the president of those conferences this week. So we get that signed and I think Marty can just go to Ed's or, uh. Yeah, yeah, yeah. So we've got to get a hold of them and see if they can come down there.
Concerning, sorry, concerning the Arnold Cemetery, those trees and big logs, some of those are three foot in diameter or better. They're going to be cut out tomorrow morning and then even if we haul them out, they're, they're just too big for them to be able to haul out. They need to cut them smaller pieces. So.
It's actually the grass that people.
I, I had.
Didn't look nice for Memorial Day and, uh, it was neat to, to me in the past and the entry there was, and was the same contractor as last year. And I don't, I, I mean, I don't understand why we can't get grass now really, like weekly grass now while it's, while it's growing so fast. It, it'll taper off.
Okay. Well, I, we have a budget, right? I think we're trying to, we, some forecast where we thought two weeks would get us. And so that's, that's what we bitted out and contracted it as it's two weeks. And so I think before we were loud and clear in the last couple of meetings that we, we want to be more aggressive with grass. So our cost is four, but that's like what council's telegraphing to me. Yeah. And I think, I think honestly the contractors are struggling in the sense that they've got a lot of work. And so we'll, we'll have that conversation with them and just say, can we switch to a one week until, until not needed arrangement? Because we were, the last time we had this conversation, we had a conversation with the contractor to say, please keep an eye on it. If you think it needs mowed, mow it. Right? I was kind of leaving it in their discretion. So we'd have to go out there every day, see how much it sprout up in the night. But, um, we'll, we'll just move to a one week or. One cut a week arrangement.
The, um, grass at Water Street and around the tunnel bridge on that side of the Water Street parking lot. Has never been that. All year.
And it's part of the contract with the contractor is that that area was called out and they, so we just had it before we worked this one.
So, um, is, somebody needs to do it. Can we have the street department do it? I mean, the Carp Festival and Second Saturdays this weekend.
Right.
Well.
The contractors indicated they're getting here. So we've been trying to give them the time to get there in a sense. So.
Did you have something to come to you about?
No, they didn't do it this weekend. I know Mars.
When you get away from yard grass and get into these type of running situations, I could, you can mow it every two or three days. Really, I've been mowing my grass down there and I know. He mowed it every two or three days. So I mean, it's probably like an all summer. But, yeah, we need to get it mowed by the, the fishing banks and stuff. But, yeah, there is no way anybody can keep up with anything right now. Honestly, in that kind of a situation, I mean, it's on a yard. I mean, these places are a little bit rough and. I, they grow like, hey. They're just, if you, if you don't got them every two or three days, they don't look like you want them to look. I'm just, I'm just taking it for the work and then.
I had a complaint yesterday from, uh, citizens about the Polk Creek Park not being kept.
Welcome to the Park, Pat. Right as we get done with our word four.
So let me, let me, you asked me a question about street departments.
Sure.
We probably won't do that, but my feelings is it's got so far out of hand. And if we need to get this done by Saturday, I'm not really sure we can get that done. But I don't know. We had, again, like Nate says, we have budget known. We have been budgeted enough to maybe just put one of these, uh, uh, track hoes in there with, with a, um, brush hog and brush hog that especially the side that's open on water because it's got a lot of trees in it. Uh, I don't know whether you're all interested in that or not. And I'm just saying that we probably, number one over on front of town, we probably get that down and make that pretty decent. But, uh, Marty and I was on the phone today, which made us ask for help with that situation. We was in there and we talked to the contractor and she is really not wanting to rip the things. She would rather get out of that.
That's what I was like, right?
So she was wanting out of those. So Marty and I was thinking about trying to find someone else that Marty had been on the phone this morning with a couple of other people. So, but really to make, to get this side, on this side, I think we probably won't have, have a track hoe in there reaching down to get some of that because there's some, some trees.
Well, we've got, um, just a weed eater knocking some of it down, just around the bank there, around the parking lot and around the bridge for the wonderful. Um, and as far as her not wanting to fulfill her contract, that's fine. We, we do have, I mean, I'm sure. It acts busy. We've got Simon Fizik that works in the city. We've got John Goodwin that works in the city. They all have business license and, uh.
We can reach out and find somebody else. It's just, that's the first indication really. Help us out. Some humlins late, late last week that, that we maybe had at this place. So we'll get confirmation from her. See if we can find somebody else up. Hopefully if Mike and the guy are generous enough, we can at least tackle the parking lot area before Saturday. Hopefully more, but I don't, they've got other works. And this is the whole reason we went down this road. Our contractor was trying to work on the streets and not cut grass all summer. So I want to try to keep that as best we can and.
Can we call any contractor to do that stuff for us?
As far as the grass cutting?
Yeah.
Oh, I think so. Yeah. Will be confirmation for me, but she's ready to relinquish. I mean, that's. I said budget and that's, that's definitely a concern, but we signed, we bit this out and we told these contractors over two weeks, right? I said budget, and that's, that's definitely a concern, but we signed, we bit this out and we told these contractors over two weeks, right? And so they planned their summer based on cutting our grass every two weeks. So it's, they're, they've been generous enough and we haven't really had much pushback for them to cut more, but I think everybody's full, their points are full, right? And they're trying to help us out the best they can. They're probably are too full with two weeks being the, being the rotation, so that's, that's a concern as well, right? So when we go do this, every once in a while, every week, we're breaking our contract at that point, so we kind of have to do some delicate for us, like, whatever.
We need a new contract.
What's that?
We, we can try.
Yeah.
Uh, since it's a form of special, we have.
Or hire another contractor.
Yeah, yeah, I, there's ways around it. I just, I said, the operator, Matt, if you've been using this, let them cut it as it's all fit and, you know, that's not working.
Okay, is that all you have, Nate? But now, can I just throw something to you really quick? Also, moving forward, we have to also consider the July second festival on that area too, and make sure that the grass is out of here as well.
And I have one more question for Mike to see if he can cut mildly far too.
A lot of people have felt those complaints about the cemetery.
We gets, oh, we can, I have.
And I know, is it for like? This has been.
Right? I think we're seeing a common thread for all this, we've got it for a second.
Okay, I will entertain a motion to approve all of the department reports.
I may to approve.
I have a second.
It's been moved in second. All in favor, say aye. Oppose, motion carries. Next, under old business final budget revision for fiscal year twenty twenty two.
You need to revise that because of grass now. It's been outdated already.
We're not passing one night. In a perfect world, you'd have somebody who had done this and we could pass this, and I said, we're not going to be there. And so we're probably going to be next week to do this. So what I provided to you is basically, this is our chart of accounts that I've prepared on Excel when we do our budgeting process. You see the first couple of pages, you know, from two ninety five to three ninety nine, so the pages one and two, those are your revenue accounts. Revision number two is what we're working on right now because we're related to the game. Those have our essentially what I did today was get into our QuickBooks, look at how much revenue we collected. I rounded up roughly a thousand dollars. And to make it nice and even for most of these, unless they were something I knew with like gas and oil severance tax, three oh three. That's a one-time payment, you get once a year, so that's the number it's going to be. It's not going to increase any more next month, but so this is what you see. These are revenue amounts and you can take this whole look at it all you want, but at, at the bottom of page two, you'll see uh, three, three million dollar numbers, right? So the first is three point two, the second is three point three, that's what we first projected in our levees, the first number, the second one was revision number one. So with my projections, we're looking at, we've brought in three, we're going to bring in three and a half million dollars on the revenue side. It doesn't mean we brought in actually three and a half million, that means with our rollover of one million dollars from our revision at the beginning of the year, we brought in three and a half, two and a half million plus. So that was two hundred, almost two hundred thousand more than we projected in our last revision. That's good, it's not less. Okay, so then what I quickly did this afternoon was I went through our expenditures and I still think there's some, some things there that need cleaned up that don't make sense or I need to explain to me or something of that nature. But I went through and very quickly, like I'm saying here, looked to see where we're at. So some, some of our lines, we've overspent, we do that. We should revise them a long time ago, but we were working through that to make, make sure we're, we get them caught up in this last thing. So you can look through all those. I don't think there's anything really that, that earth shattering. The biggest one I think that's really needs, needs to be looked at going forward is the city hall line. That's four forty. And the reason it's so high, I was like, oh, look, city hall, we're spending a bunch of money up there. I've taken all our insurance payments and everything and taken them out of each individual, much, the street department is a category, there are insurance payments for employees aren't categorized in the street department. They're pulling the city hall, those things. That's why I remember it looks real big, all our insurance, you know, general liability, all those payments are going through that line as well.
What is the highlighted one hundred fifty thousand under transfer reimbursement?
That, I think, is our rainy day fund transfer, and I just wanted to highlight that for this one point I want to talk about today. I think we've got I think, once I get to, I guess, the end of my spiel here on expenditures, we, we have enough money really, I mean, I, I as long as all my numbers are correct, I need to go through, find, to kind of have about thirty two thousand dollars left over after I just kind of went through and said, hey, these are what we're doing. So the, and we have this next meeting with the revision, we need to decide on a couple of transfers, so I think by code, I'm not technically supposed to transfer money to different accounts unless council approves that. I think we're on track to be able to transfer a hundred fifty thousand dollars from, that we projected we would transfer from our general fund to the rainy day fund. I'd like to see us do that. So that's one reason I highlighted that and bring that up to you. Then I also think, you know, stormwater is another one that's a, a big transfer for us, so if you look on that, I think the last page there, it's supposed to be last page eight oh five, the storm sewer account. We spent about twenty two thousand dollars so far this year on storm sewer, like pipe and materials and things of that nature. I think, you know, for all intents and purposes, we're entitled to transfer that amount of money back into the general fund from the stormwater fund that we've burst ourselves. It's a, it's a policy decision ultimately, you could say, hey, we're, we're thirty thousand dollars ahead of what we thought we'd be this year, and we keep that in our general fund and let stormwater continue to build, or, you know, do we say, let's make sure what a pay that actually pays for.
For the video patients.
Right? And I didn't want to bring too much attention to that, but I did add enough in there to cover what I thought it cost, or, and I think we're going fine there as well. So so yeah, I think we're, we're doing okay. And some of these things we did save money on was mainly the employee, like finance office, we projected to be two hundred seventy seven thousand. I think Marty goes to about a hundred ninety thousand, you know, that's, that's the employee that we did not hire this year. So and then, you know, like building inspection, we had all those tear downs. That one was five head larger, you know, one sixty four projected two hundred fifteen thousand. So that's expected, right? We spent, we put up a date, five thousand or something, we spent over a hundred thirty thousand.
Are you comfortable leaving that under fifty thousand? Maybe just when we're going to have a big bill there.
Well, I think we approved our, for the, the cover up bill, so I'm, honestly, I think we're in a, I won't say a pickle, but we need to spend some money. That was, that was where I was trying to get to the end of this. So we're on track, we're on track again to roll over another million dollars. And this year, if we brought in enough revenues, remember when we started our budget, we said, hey, we're going to be very conservative about what our revenues are. I, you know, the economy's in precarious footing, in my opinion, and I think put some money away in case we have something, if gas prices go ten dollars a gallon, we're going to need extra revenue. Everything's going to go up, so I think putting that away is helpful and, and we've got the art of money we need to spend, so. So I think part of that conversation, I don't think anybody's going to get upset about us paving streets. That's, I want to take some further look at this and that, that week's period of time before we prove our final budget, but going into our revision for next year, it's going to happen very quickly. I think we, my mind rolls over, so we want to be able to, I think, spend on all streets. But we've got some, you know, we want to, you know, firemen like to get a, a cheese truck sort of, you can take care of some things there, so we've got some things we want to spend money on, the loss of that paid this year. All of that, I, I quickly built that in and it just kind of gives a quick beat, so.
Do we have one question on that? Do we have asphalt temporary?
I think so.
Defense covered?
I thought they were paying the limits.
Okay. And that would be Ward two and three, four streets, yep.
Wait, I've been looking at our charter for different reasons, maybe last month or so. One of the provisions of the charter is that we are supposed to equitably spend our money between the streets and the waters. So we've done a pretty good job of that. We just did that by happenstance. Yeah.
Well, I'm saying that that's, that's two.
I think if the wards want to join forces and put their budgets together and pave the street, I, I think that's a good idea. The charter will bless that.
We're working that, uh, council. So we'll have a meeting next week or so.
Yeah, I think so, next week.
All right, then, moving on to new business, the newest benefit public library retaining law.
Just received one bid, I think that was when we started contracting, and I think it was twenty thousand five hundred. For the second bid for Columbia Club.
Oh, okay.
I meant with this contractor on site, I think he drew him goes, I, I really won't have any hesitancy here. His one big thing is he wants to meet with the library to figure out what color retaining wall they want, it's going to be a red block or similar system. So at this point, if we prove it, or this bid, then we'll move forward and, and get that covered down.
Put that out and we have one person.
And that was, that was part of that extra tranche money that we authorized through our, but twenty five thousand dollars to stand in that, so we, we've remained with that in our fund.
You want a motion to accept the.
Yes.
I may to accept the bid from Hall Construction for forty six thousand seven hundred.
Oh, it's a VCR contract, so.
Oh, I'm sorry. I know. There's some, is that the next one?
Four.
Here, here, here.
I do know it, but I didn't find it. Sorry, okay, scratch the first. All right, I'll need to accept the bid for the retained law at the Senate Library. The bid is twenty thousand five hundred from VCR contracting.
It's been moved in second. Any discussion? I have a question. Was there a a timeline on the network and speak to users?
I was hoping by this month, as I mentioned in conversation, we've been moved late and get it out, but I think as long as his schedule holds up, that's, it's supposed to be a pretty good job. Is there a concern?
Yes.
Okay, and that is?
That it won't get completed in a fashion. So we have some sort of
Oh.
document. Can we have something prepared and agreed?
Well, good. I thought I put some timeframe inside the bid for that. The bid sheet, the actual bid itself, I'm pretty sure I had like thirty or sixty days on there.
You know, sometimes the county will create a timeline for, for the contractor and then if they go past that timeline, you post that money.
Yeah, look at the advantages. I'll confirm that pretty there, but I'm pretty sure I stuck that in there.
I appreciate that if you let us know.
Yeah, yeah.
Happy you have had that for a timeline for that. Any further discussion?
We should have timelines for all of our, from what we.
Well, typically what you do is you say, hey, you, you notice the award, right, from that date forward, you've got thirty days, sixty days, we're deciding the contract, right? And then at that point, you have to look what it'd be able to do after that.
Right.
And so we've had this conversation before, we're like, oh, yeah, we don't want to scare off a few contractors that were on the workforce, but we all spent it, but all times have, so. I think I put that in there, but you know, I did two bids at the same time, I didn't see it in that, uh, the other one, so I'm, I'm pretty sure that's in, in the standard library.
Thank you.
We'll have voting by roll call.
Council, Mr. Rogers?
Yes.
Council, where you go?
Yes.
Council, Debbie Young? Yes, asking for.
Yes.
Okay, motion carries. Next, oh. Award bid for Columbia Club drainage.
All right, this one is, uh, we've had plans prepared by Van Osteren Architects who has said this, we've met with the contractor on site. He's the only bidder according to his friends as well. This is Hall Construction, that is this forty six thousand seven hundred dollars. And I, I want to add a caveat to our recommendation here. I recommend that we work with this much, but I would like for council to authorize me to spend up ten percent more on change orders, because I think this project's going to get a little tricky once we start digging in there, and I just want the ability to be able to not have to feel pressure from all sides to reconvene and figure out our pricing. So I think within ten percent, that's pretty, pretty well generally accepted limit in the construction, uh, construction realm. And I just want the ability to, like I said, be able to make some, some different calls if necessary, the site conditions necessitate, if that costs a little bit more money, be able to give that authorization moving forward.
Typically, we would have that authorization, spend up to five thousand dollars in the, but it's good that we include that in the motion.
And we need to address that in some kind of financial policy moving forward, but thank you. Happened to be five thousand dollars or less than, we think, definitely.
I have a question. The, the money that this will be taken out of, is this grant money or is this city money?
Um, both. If you go back to your, your revision, we budgeted seventy five thousand dollars for our works over there, so for our grant, we, we put up sixty five thousandish money dollars for the project for Columbia Club Phase One. We spent about twenty thousand, so we're going to get to that sixty thousand threshold, and then the grant will give us forty five thousand for the, for the agreement. Now, we're going to have to spend more on the roof to fully access, access those funds, but like I said, that, this is city money with a reimbursement from the grant, that's understood, for, for half of it, essentially.
Forward to face two, where are we?
We haven't gotten a notice on either one of the grant to a platform at this point, or if we've been accepted for a phase two project, so. We're, as we discussed, this, this is, you know, time, very time sensitive. Working with Mill Street now at this point on the roofing side, and so we're hoping to get a bid out at the end of the month and invoice very quickly for a mobilization contract for our contractor to get that paid and, and make sure we maximize our grant dollars in this phase one. And also, I hope we come to you and, and hopefully at that point, we should have a notice from the state when we've been accepted for phase two or not. I think we've got to get the roof on there, whatever that cost is, to get this building taken care of and to keep it classified any further, so. That's the direction I'm headed.
Right now, this is for the drainage and the change.
Correct. Then.
And then this will be later.
Yeah, we're advertising right now, apparently, we don't have set of documents, we're waiting on those from Mills, but we've advertised once before, no one bids, and we're not, we've got one contractor again on the hook who says they're willing to do the work. We just got to give them a set of specs, like, and submit their proposal.
Yeah, we entertain a motion to accept the recommendation for contractor Hall Construction, forty six thousand seven hundred to include a ten percent overage and charges to allow the city.
Make that motion.
Is there a second? I'll second. It's been moved in second. Any discussion? We'll have voting by roll call.
Council, Mr. Rogers?
Yes.
Council, where you go?
No.
Council, Debbie Young?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, motion carries. Thank you all very much. Uh, next ordinance, twenty twenty two dash ten. For Assistant Financial Director.
I wrote that over. Two. That was very nice.
Yeah, rest of the ride is on the way.
Yes, very nice. One thing I was concerned about, Joe, and that was. One thing I was concerned about, Joe, and that was, um, that ordinance, um, is it intended to allow the city of Weston to adjust the pay of the assistant as needed, that would be council approval, was that correct? I was just, because generally, we do that.
I'm gonna go philosophical here for a second. If you look back through our old notices, like every time somebody got a raise, council went there and said, yeah, give me forty more an hour. I think that, that, as you become a bigger enterprise, that's it's kind of rough to do something like that, and have that kind of process for, for raises. My feeling is, is that when you guys authorize a budget, you've authorized us to extend that budget. And I think from administrators, from the administrative side, that that's, you've given me some latitude within that, right, to make those decisions. So what we're trying to avoid here is, I think, we're gonna, we're gonna put the first year's pay from this assistant director in this ordinance. But we don't want the next council to say, well, shoot, you guys said they're gonna get paid this much, so we want to give them a raise, and then pass another ones. We're trying to sit here and give ourselves a language that says, yeah, that wasn't the initial side, but that's gonna be depended on. Yeah, qualifications and budget concessions and all that stuff is going forward. So I think that's our intention with that, with that language, that makes sense to you?
Yes, right, when it says the city manager shall have the ability to adjust the system's pay for the, of the, of the city budget, um, it's not in keeping with the rest of the raises, A, and B, um, you may not always be here, we're looking to the future on this. And yes, we trust you, if you're that, then we may not trust the other side, so.
I think you've got, you've got to trust the city manager here, and I think that's
Sure, certainly.
Part of this, like I said, this is just philosophical, right, it's not me personally, I don't get, that's, that's part of this government form, is that you've got to let your administrator make those kinds of decisions. And I think when you do your budget process, that's, that's probably the decision to make, as far as how much you're gonna pay employees. That's just, it's not philosophy.
Right.
I think we control spending through the budget proposals and the budgeting on the budget. If you want to restrict or regulate a certain area, then propose it and, and put it into the budget and revisions, and get, get the budget leveled down, if you're worried that we're gonna get too much, I don't know, I, we, we can't regulate, micro manage the city manager and all, his, uh, employees, I don't, I don't, I guess that's what we're here for.
Now, I guess put in a more practical approach, right, we just recently had the code official go part-time, right, as we transitioned, and it's kind and technically, if we were to use that framework, where council has to prepare it, every time, as soon as that guy came off, we should have had approval by council to adjust his pay, right, it went from exempt to non-exempt. And then at that point, uh, I made the administrative call to reduce this hour back to what we originally approved.
We moved on from that.
And that, understood, right, but if we were to follow a letter or a wall, or a lot of our policy, what we think of policies, we would have to call a special meeting to do that, yeah.
Can we just strike that one sentence since that?
I'm up for it, but do whatever you want, your orders.
It isn't in any of the others, right?
Well, I think we've started to incorporate that in, in some of the buildings.
We haven't seen any of those, your job. Since four.
Does, does the charter call for a a finance director?
Yes, the charter says call for a fin, for an appointed finance director.
So assistant finance director wouldn't fall under that.
But I think it would fall under it, it's not, uh, uh, it's not an appointed position per the charter. I think it would be like any other worker, in the, in the, in the sense that you have your council, and there's four or five different people that are accountable by council, city attorney, city manager, finance manager, and clerk. Then everybody else funnels up through the city manager into, into council. So the finance director would fall somewhere under the city manager, under the finance director position, to funnel up through into council. So, does that make sense, or is that answering your question?
Yeah, pretty much, I just.
And, 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 as far as, I, 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 I think we have this struggle, and, and, it, it's not, nothing against anybody at the table, it's not against anybody at this table. It's part of the struggle with this, of this former government, it's, it could be a good thing, it could be a good struggle. The responsiveness of a city manager having these, I don't want to use the word broadly, because that's too, that's not the right word, but these abilities to make these day-in, day-out decisions is, is the purpose of this role of city manager, it's not supposed to be one that, that is, he's beholden to the policies you all set, but to come in and tell you what color toothbrush to use, I don't, that's kind of like Ramsey, that's awful cumbersome to get things done on a, on a day-to-day, week-to-week basis.
But you, I'm.
But, but if you don't want, and, and I'm, I'm saying, if you don't want that policy, that's fine, there's nothing wrong with whatever policy y'all want to set.
I'm good with all that.
Yeah.
I was just asking if there were, my only question was, is I thought there could call the charter for a finance director wall.
Yeah.
Not, not the, uh, okay.
That's what's new.
I, I.
This would be the creation of this position, much like we did for the assistant building.
And the, the city manager has power, I don't think he has the power to make a position for the city, I think the, the council has, understanding, all has the power to make that position. Now, do, I think the city manager has the authority to hire a person for that position, I think you all can lean on him to hire somebody, but I think it's all to his decision.
Sorry, I didn't mean to.
No, it's definitely.
I think every, every decision that is made that we want to be involved in, I think we should make it through the budget process rather than going through and picking item by item. If, if we want something done, go to the budget and get it, get the budget revision, and lower a certain section, if, if you're worried about money going so far, too much, too little, his decisions, whatnot, we, we control the whole thing by budget. So we should be more concerned with studying your budget and putting the money where we think it should be, rather than taking these ordinances and picking them apart and going through and doing all that, we, we can go with the budget.
All right, let me say this just one last time, my question had nothing to do with the decisions the city manager makes. It's clear there.
Yeah. And honestly, it's one of those things like, let's, let's take the food part, we'll go over it, sir. When we, when we gave them a raise, right, we didn't do a budget revision because we weren't able to say within their budgetary line that we'd already approved. So we didn't have to do a budget revision, if we didn't have that money, we'd have to revise the budget. But from the way I understand finance, when we get, when we get to a good place, and then we'll manage our finances at a optimal, optimal level, when, when you guys have approved a sub-account, essentially, I think you guys should get notice of that, right, so that, that means essentially, we're gonna get the form, we're managing our finances in such a manner that we've really gone over on full paper this month. Council making you aware of it, we're gonna have to re, reorganize, and we'll probably ask for approval of some sort, in that, that fashion. You have that ability, that's what we've been told with the auditors trading, right, they, they got down to that. From a personal standpoint, that gets a little ludicrous, that to ask you guys to let us do more on full paper, the full paper's not. But that's the, the direction, I guess, the auditor's office has given us, in some way or fashion. Ultimately, I think the, the main line is what matters, you've hired a professional to manage that main line. She asks questions about it, right, you should have the breakdown of what your sub-accounts are, and she should, yeah, she should ask the city manager, okay, you we're gonna change the pay you, how's that gonna work, is there our, our framework, those are questions that you can look at, but ultimately, I, I think you're just hamstrapping yourself to, to put some kind of language in there where you don't allow the city manager to possibly change that second to fly, that, that should be done in concert with you all, right, so.
Well, actually, in support of the line that has been inserted in there, if you were offering raises, if you were considering employees for raises, or if there was a shortage of funds, and you hadn't made a decision about lowering wages, who would know better than you what employees that should impact? And you would be the one to bring those recommendations to council. So there's another reason to support what's there.
And I, I hope it's not abuse of paragraph, because that's not what it is, it's just trying to make ourselves a little bit more efficient. Also, strengthen the role of the city manager, now, I just reversed it, paragraph is nicer word, right, but, but that's, that's the former government we are, and I think it's, it's, it, it hoes us to, to make clear the roles and responsibilities between the two of us, so that's all we're trying to do with this ordinance, to say, if, we're not gonna be stuck at forty thousand dollars, whatever number we decide tonight in this position, that needs to change through the budgetary process, we can change that, if I have to change it.
Okay, so we are at the point, um, now, once that's any more questions, or entertain a motion to have the first reading of the ordinance by title only?
We need to decide on what that first year's pay's gonna be. I guess my recommendation, this one with the raises is forty-one thousand five hundred, so we should be within there.
I think that's a little high financial, I think. Let's turn it up. First name.
I don't think I'm hiring entry-level person, I guess, with this job description, I think they're, they're, they've got some abilities. And I think when we talk about their experience on the back inside here, right? Bachelor's degree, public administration, this guy, at least five years of experience in progressively responsible position, or any equivalent combination of education, experience, training. I think that's entry-level.
I just know, when we, I mean, we have a choice by positions, and, and we have candidates for a spot, um, so we get someone without that experience, and that's all that we have received, and we're still gonna pay forty-one thousand.
Uh, I think we authorize ourselves to go up to that point, right, so I think, again, it goes back to the city manager to make that determination on what's their level of skills and what we should offer, right?
I have a quick question for you. As far as them in analysis on our income, as far as annual revenue for the city, and then taking a percentage as far as, taking all city employees and what they make, and then where we should be as far as our payroll, a percentage, because you maybe only want to get a certain percentage as far as paying when you're bearing your revenue, just coming in, where are we there at the other level?
I have one that announces also. I mean, I'm just looking at the work we've got to get done, and we don't have enough people. I mean, we, we need good people.
Yeah.
And you want to get good people, you gotta pay them something.
Sure.
And then that's the level of analysis I've provided this way here.
I mean, because it's there, I mean, those numbers don't lie, and at some point, you know, just to make sure that, that you're not succeeding, yeah. And money coming in.
And there's some concern about where the funds are coming from for this position.
We, we've had a budget for all year, we've never filled it. And we're paying consultants. Yeah, this year, our numbers, we've already paid fifty-five thousand, we've budgeted forty thousand for them, because those are the tasks we've had to have them do to survive. And we're, we've got, since Johnson's been a wonderful job, finance director, but for other indications, said, you know, this is her last post, and she's doing double duties, a finance director and being municipal fees clerk, we've got to find somebody to be able to do those things. Replace her at some point in time, I mean, that's, that's gonna be a transition, we're trying to set ourselves up where when she decides to ride off in the sunset, and that's not too soon, but she decides to do that, that person can jump in and carry this task form, or rather replace her with somebody else, and it most likely will be somebody lower on the toad pole. Fees clerk. But we've got things like payroll, pension payments, those are what I spend my days doing, making payments to the BIA. I don't think your city manager should be doing those things long-term, we've done that to steady the ship, make sure we can handle it financially, but I think we've shown that we, we have the finances, and we need to make these investments in our staff.
At great standards.
A little bit of that, we're gonna allow that out there, to make this assistant finance director, to make this more powerful, but they're gonna be, I mean, we're all holding that together, right? So we need, we need the position, I think we need the ability to, to hire somebody that has some abilities, proven abilities, has some power. Those things also, so, I I've had a cursory conversation, I, we'd like you to find somebody at that price, skills you like to have.
I have one thing to, to input here. We discussed this before at a previous meeting, with the price cost of insurance. New people coming in, can we go, are you twenty with all the people, and keep the people that have the nine and ten?
Council can do whatever they want, I think.
Man, it doesn't affect any employee here that already has that, but looking long-term, the rising cost of insurance is getting outrageous and premium. So now would be the time to change that with new hires coming in.
I don't share the same fear of it, I think that there's other options available to us. But I think it's, it's on the table, something you consider, you guys can savage one, I think it creates an environment where you get two years with employees. It's more management from, from a financial standpoint, to deal with that stuff, you know, what are you saving, we're talking twelve hundred bucks, thirteen hundred dollars a month. You know, we're gonna save a couple hundred bucks a month, maybe, maybe a hundred dollars a month, it's real money, but it's grants people things, but we're not taking much.
A couple of years ago at our organization, because funds were tight, we thought about doing that, but unless you're doing the same for everyone, it's just not good.
I don't share our same sentiment, we're, we're super hard up, you know, we, we don't have, we're not rich, we don't have fifty million dollars coming in every year, acknowledged. But I, I think we, we, we're in this paradigm where we've shrunk our staff down. We just had a recent retiree, that, we had to replace that person as of this day. We've, I think we've all had this discussion where we're trying, yes, we're gonna pay more for better employees, per se, but we're gonna get better results out of better employees, and we've shrunk our, shrunk our workforce down to the levels where I'll be very frank, I mean, things don't change, you're gonna be fine, probably another city manager, right, because it just becomes too much. After a while, I don't, I don't think you spend fifty, sixty hours here working on this stuff. So we need the help, and I guess it's, I made my recommendations to you on what, what I feel that help should look like, I think best uses now and in the future. How much more to say that? Now, we initially talked about forty, and I think if we put in the budget, most inflation's happened this year, I think that that's, that's what we're. We ready for a motion?
Now, I would like to, um, I mean, if, if you're sitting there saying we're gonna be looking for another city manager, I don't trust the next one of the line in there. And I'm not telling you what color toothbrush to use either, I'm just looking to the future and taking my responsibilities seriously.
I hear you, I hear you, I again, I.
And also, I may not be here in the future, so.
Okay, well, we're, we're really spending a lot of time, and I understand it's an important issue, as we, we need to come to some sort of consensus. Entertained a motion, had the first reading by title only, inserted the amount of recommended forty-one five, or whatever amount that's wanted to put in there.
Well, I'll make a motion to, uh, read the ordinance title only, ordinance twenty twenty-two dash ten, Assistant Financial Director, forty-one five, limit on the salary.
Is there a second to that motion? Asking again, is there a second to that motion? Motion dies for lack of a second. Moving on.
I haven't read it very long yet.
Can I make a motion?
Sure.
To, um, have a first review. Twenty-two dash ten, uh, for the first year paying for your assistant not to exceed forty-one five, striking the line. Let me go ahead to produce this, discuss. The city manager shall have the authority to adjust the system's pay with any further inter of this.
Is there a second to that motion? Asking again, is there a second to that motion?
Read, read your motion again.
I was doing the forty-one five, just striking this one. To, to, to have the first review.
So you can make the decision, raise your vote the way we take that out.
My counsel always does for all the other races. So nothing changes.
Asking for the final time, is there a second to that motion? Again, motion dies for a lack of a second. So we move on. To police hardship commute policy.
I don't want to touch this just one more time. I know I'm kind of having a lot to say this, but I think we need to, we need to really evaluate what we're trying to accomplish here. We, I mean, as a staff, as a city manager, I've come to council multiple times now for this position that we need, that we need. And I think it's borders on the ludicrous for us to drug through like this. And we have the money. We have it in the budget. We budgeted for it. The only reason we're doing an ordinance now is so that we can expand those roles and try to capitalize on someone who may have a little bit more expanded talents. Instead of just hiring a fees clerk. And I think we've got to understand what kind of portrayal of, as an organization, are we going to sit here and argue over miniscule things? And drop good boys away, our attitude sorts of stuff. That's, that's a real thing. I'm sitting here looking at my staff's face. I might have been involved in this conversation, but this is, it's dejected. Dejected atmosphere. Okay, that's all I can say. Thank you.
I wouldn't have hoped that council would come to some sort of consensus and support the recommendation of hiring for this position. I certainly.
Madam Mayor, I, I, this, this ordinance has been, been for the council two or three months, two or three times now. Not one council member has called me to discuss this. Not one.
Actually.
Nope, not one council member's called.
I don't believe that this is the time or place to.
Well, I just wanted for the record, to be on the record, that's what we shared. Thank you.
I would like something on the record as well. Um, this job description has changed from the one that you had presented in the past. You did, you did regret that.
After discussing with you, why, why?
On request, it had.
From your guys' side. We wrote this to fit what you felt were the parameters of the position.
Exactly, and I acknowledge that, and I acknowledge.
Why bother?
Moving on to police hardship commute policy.
I, can I make an amendment to this? Because my thing is the salary I thought we had originally was forty. I understood it was about fifteen hundred.
If you want to, but when we went through the budget process, we gave everybody, every position fifty hundred dollars extra when we went through that process. And that's all I'm trying to do there. I'm not trying to sneak something by you. I'm trying to give that person. Because we, we gave fifty hundred dollars. Why? Because of inflation, right? Because we know this country has gone through eight percent, ten percent inflation this year. That's where we're at. We spent four months dealing with this and that inflation has occurred. So that's, that's all I'm trying to do. You want to make a forty, make a forty. We need a job.
Well, I would just think that this person has to make forty yet to give him that fifteen to go.
Yes, there's a motion to go into executive session citing personnel. Is there a second? It's been moved in second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? No she cares.
I just wanted to let you know I didn't want to.
I understand.
Hey, hey, that's my job. Well, it's far ahead.
But I have a lot of reasons to not go. Number one, you like me when you're trying to. Number two, I didn't want to get in your way. Number three, I mean. So it wasn't as bad as I.
So what is that? It's about four hours. Make sure, it's been a cluster of. To make sure we got low, how big's what.
Yeah. Well.
Second, which this one. But then just like. Some of that. Yes.
So back to.
No, Jason texted me and I was going to get off the.
They have the likes of. And then you get more. There you even have now. I saw himself. And then the. And ours. Yes. But now that would be worse. Cheese shirt. I mean, you can't. Cheese wax.
Yeah, well, I can end that one much anymore.
It's very relaxing. I'm looking for all in long term.
Okay, is there a motion to exit executive session? Second, is there a move in second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Motion carries. And is there a motion to have the first reading of the ordinance twenty-two dash ten for the assistant financial director? So. Uh, by title only.
By title only.
And with the amount inserted.
Oh, four thousand five hundred.
Is there a second?
I'll say.
Okay, any discussion? We'll have voting by roll call. Councilwoman Sherri Rogers?
Yes.
Councilwoman. Councilwoman David Delph, yes, Emily Harper.
Yes.
Okay, motion carries. Ordinance twenty-two dash ten, create, creation of position of assistant finance director by title. Yeah, now I entertain a motion to accept the first reading of the ordinance for assistant financial director.
Move to accept the first reading.
Second.
Of the position of assistant finance director.
It's been moved in second, any discussion? We'll have voting by roll call. Councilwoman Sherri Rogers?
Yes.
Councilwoman Ray Bowden? Councilwoman David Delph, yes, and someone. Motion carried. Thankfully, I don't have to break two arms and four legs. Um, police hardship commute policy.
So before we get started, will the attorney take a decision on this one? And yes, we're talking about a policy that, that has been placed in the handbook for, for a given time.
General policy of personnel discussion is not an executive session, but I don't know if a particular officer or officers would ever get named in this conversation. And if it happens to be named, I think, I think an executive, executive session would be appropriate in that situation. But if we're just talking in generalized terms, I don't think an executive session is, is allowed.
I, I think we can, I think we can talk about it without naming names. Uh, I mean.
Well, like you said, it's a general policy. I don't see a need to point the applicable to all.
So for, that's for the last meeting, when, um, we brought to you the hardship situation. We, um, it was two different proposals at the time. And they both seemed, they were opposite ends of the spectrum. And so we have went and we've dived a little deeper into this and we've come up with a, uh, what we think is a fair number for all party, for, for the all parties involved. And so what that number does is it takes the, whatever the current IRS mileage radius, which at this given time is fifty-eight cents a mile. And it deducts the, what is it, depreciation? Is that correct?
Yes.
It deducts the depreciation from that, which is, I think this year comes up to twenty-six cents a mile. And then that leaves you with the wrong number, like what covers your, 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 your gas or those things. And so that's, that's what we're.
Any questions about the proposed policy? So, yes, fifty-six.
Fifty-eight cents.
Eight cents.
When you subtract the twenty-six cents from it, which is the, you know, natural appreciation and reasonable price. And so it leaves you currently with thirty-two cents a mile, which is what, it covers your oil and gas, your internal.
Just let that place it.
Correct.
In this instance, they equate it to a lot of week.
Um, and, and this is, this, I think it's going to be about fifty dollars a week. I, I'd have to, you know, warn the law on the exact mileage, but it's going to be somewhere between fifty-five and sixty dollars when we print it up for sure. That's.
You wrote the policy.
For the time being, yes, I guess.
We worded this as hardship, right?
That's correct. And, and it says in there that it can, the variance may be revoked for, and any time, for any reason, with, you know this. And that was one of my, that was one of my biggest concerns was lending us the ability to, to get out of this and.
Right. Is that policy?
Is that policy that by city, our city authority, but any employee law or?
It was, the, the policy was wrote by, um, the attorney for the chief of police and the deputy sheriff's association.
Cool. It just concerned me a little the wording of, may revoke such variance for any reason.
Oh, you're talking about this specific policy?
Yes.
It is not that revenue. This was, we kind of threw this together today.
What concerns you about that?
Uh, because you could end up, it could result in unfair treatment of different employees if it's not set in. Or give the semblance of.
Let me get the sense. I'm just making someone there. Do you want five examples, one that will be revoked? One example, or ten examples, or a thousand examples? Something.
Actually, I think that might be, might be wise if those would be clearly established. Because otherwise, it would be arguable.
When we serve our graphic, we just change. I think we, personally, I'm comfortable with removing that language that says it may be revoked, and just to say that its status should, should a hardship variance be granted, its status will be reviewed here and there.
I think that's perfect.
And that again gives us, is really what we're going to do is just give ourselves.
Right. And wait, when the hardship, when we identify the hardship zone, that we could end the hardship because.
Yeah. So I'll entertain a motion to, uh, accept the amendment to the City of Weston Police Department handbook noting the, uh, the change in the last paragraph to whatever chief office said.
I'll make that motion, just like that.
I'll second that one.
Okay, it's been moved in second, any discussion? We'll have voting by roll call.
Wonder what matters for that stuff.
Yes.
Councilwoman Ray Bowden?
Yes.
Councilwoman Debbie Dump? Yes. Councilwoman Harper?
Yes.
Motion carries. The next item on the agenda is the application for the Lewis County Chamber of Commerce After Hours Garden Party. Uh, that's in collaboration with the Citizens Bank of Weston and Lewis County First. And since I am a member of Lewis County First, I will recuse myself from this vote, and Vice Mayor Rogers will handle this discussion.
Mayor, come on, you're gonna leave the room.
Hi. I'm here.
Okay.
Okay, you have the application in front of you to hold it, the whole property, June thirtieth, from six to eight. Entertain a motion to approve.
I make a motion to approve the application by Lewis County Chamber Congress for an after-hours garden party to be held on the whole property on June thirtieth, twenty twenty-two.
Is there a second?
Our second.
Any discussion? Voting by roll call.
Councilwoman Ray Bowden?
Yes.
Councilwoman Dippa? Yes. Councilwoman Harper?
Yes.
Motion carries.
She's gone, man.
She's gone, man.
So I don't have her back.
I think she was eating, dropping.
I was.
Hovering to tip things.
Okay, next is application for Weston Fire Department for waiver of the open container for the July second festivities.
And I think they're secretly.
Oh, okay.
We just have to have the waiver for our ABC license for the year.
I'll move to approve.
Is there a second?
Our second.
It's been moved and second to approve the waiver of the open container and the parade permit for July second. Any discussion? Voting by roll call.
Councilwoman Sherry Rogers?
Yes.
Councilwoman Ray Bowden? Councilwoman Debbie Dump?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, motion carries. Next. Discussion and meeting dates for fire department first due priorities for fiscal year twenty twenty-two, twenty-three, annexation and ward meetings.
I think in the fact, if you got a list of dates.
I just saw a number on the back. So I just printed it in there. A copy wrong. I have my gun in there.
Oh, okay.
Well, we want to have a meeting going next week with us, opposing dates down to you, right, thirteen to fourteen?
I will be on it soon, on the beach.
Yeah, maybe.
Next week, what's that?
Well, in your packet, those looks day for a case of air, it gives me that first schedule.
I have the fifteen available next week, and that's it. I'll get that back.
This Friday?
Thursday. We have written heading.
We got too much on Friday.
Yeah.
Yeah.
It looks like the fifteen.
Biggest concern is whether it was two to fifteen, but Weston produces.
Okay.
Yes.
Well, unless you want to sign that. No.
Some words there.
Okay.
I did it here.
Can we do that?
On the fifteen?
I just, I mean, I could call it, but. I just have to spend the beach time around. Yes, I'm rubbing it in.
Why don't we start with that?
That's just, we've got so much going on.
I'm going to beach.
All right, the fifteenth it is, one time.
Four thirty, is that okay, or is that your?
That's fine. One time. Four thirty on the fifteenth. And this is.
It's on the agenda. It's on every agenda. It's a known.
I like that.
I don't mind. I want for this enough.
Okay, so are we saving the discussion on first due and why that, or I do?
Well, I think that's probably one of the reasons. We need to talk about budget. The budget. First be fired, and we'll do that in June roughly, so everybody's back.
Everyone needs to be there.
Yeah, I think so. And I think, like I said today, with our discussion of the, uh, priorities, I think we sit down and do that next year and figure out our budget.
How's that one?
Next July, next fiscal year.
Well, we need priorities second. I think that we have a question, but we have a priority work session.
But I was, I was thinking maybe combine that discussion with whatever our revision, because we'd sit down and revise our budget. I've had to do fiscal year once we get our numbers. I understand what you guys want to do at the same time, just kind of kick that for the.
That's not tip, right?
No, 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 we're talking, we're, no, we're talking in July at this point. Yeah. July one, when we're talking about the main statements on, have our numbers, but.
Special. So that's.
So June, June tenth is budget division.
June tenth?
No.
Or not, June fifteen, so.
Fifteen.
Four thirty. Four thirty, fifteen.
Fifteen next Wednesday.
Yeah, four thirty.
It's not the seventeenth.
How about the twenty-fourth for that next meeting?
Twenty-fourth, uh.
And if not, the twenty-seven, which is a Monday.
Friday.
How do you?
I think I need to be there for first. What about on Thursday? We've got that fire commission meeting, four thirty, you just want to shoot for council meeting after that? Third.
How about Monday, your twenty-seven? My date is twenty-seven? Four thirty.
When our council meeting the next month is on July fifth, because we're closed on the Monday fourth. Which are, so that's.
Okay. Okay, next discussion of Deanville property.
I gotta move it.
Four thirty.
Yeah, this whole paper now, hold on, not such more important, start four. Uh, we did, we did get the. We got the property down at the old sanitary board. And, um, it's still, I've been asking for a couple of months, and Dee and I are trying to get it cleaned out, but it's just not working. Uh, the guys are really busy doing their work, so what we're planning on doing is I'm using my men to go down and clean out this building. And basically, we're taking everything that's in there to Jerry's stouts. It's all just junk, okay? Over the years of pumps and stuff, it's outdated work, can't even use. But anyway, we're taking that all to Jerry's guy. I would just like to have that money put aside somewhere else, and how we need to do it. But first of all, we're gonna have to repair the building. The roof is looking a little bit, and there's not that much repair needed to be in the building. We need to put a fence back and gate across the front so that when we take stuff down there, it won't be stolen. And then what's left over, if there is any leftover, and I'm sure I said that, that's the way to. Uh, the other thing, if there's any money left over, we, we've been dumping a lot of stuff down there, so we need to get a dozen in there, move some of the stuff around, so we can continue moving ahead. We're planning on taking our pipe down there, or, uh, snowplows, salt blocks, and stuff like that, get them out of there. I just need more of it. I don't have any of that. So that's basically what I'm wanting to do. I don't know how much money is going to be there, depending on what we did out there in Jerry's Valley. I just want that money going back into that building, or that piece of property, so that we, as a street department, can use it. I would also. And, and I, and I will.
Does that fence are going to really be much to the turf or, or other?
Any monies made from the solid, that scrap does go to the City of Weston, because the sanitary board has already vacated the property. And the property actually belongs to the City of Weston. So any income would go into the general fund budget. However, it can be earmarked for repairs that are needed there. And I'm assuming you're gonna do good tracking on those funds that come in.
We've already started. Yeah, we've already started on it. We've already taken stuff to Stouts, and I've got the approval to go ahead and do it through the sanitary board, and we've already taken some out, but there's some big pieces that's going to take some machinery to get it up there, we'll cut it up on it. But I think if I take those out there, like some of the motors and stuff, if I sort some of that out, I can get better money out of motors than I did just for this matter. So I would like to get as much out of it as possible and fix the building.
Well, it's good that you're getting that cleaned out as there.
But. I would just like to.
I think when we revise the budget, just figure out what the other was, like if we make smaller restrictions up, and we put that down.
That's, I'd say I just want to make sure that it, that goes to that building.
Yes, we just need to tell us what that dollar amount is that you're getting.
And when, when we, when they give us, when they give us a check, we'll, we'll get off.
All right. Okay. Sounds good.
Yes.
Um.
Thank you all.
Well, thank you.
A question. Yes. I got, but. Are that the way for that, for the part of? Thank you.
Okay, this also for the. I didn't. Okay. Thank you. Um, next, under reports of city council. I passed out my report on all the meetings attended for the month. The only other thing I want to mention, I had a request from, uh, citizens of the neighborhood watch to have ward meetings. And we are reaching our final year in our term. And I know that we did, uh, ward meetings, uh, one and two, and then three and four after the sauna temple last time. I'd like to try a different approach, and I would like for each counselor to identify a place in their ward uh, that residents could go for a very informal ward meeting. They can come and they can talk about issues or things that, uh, the city has done to improve their ward. And perhaps even, you know, take, uh, take council on a tour of what they feel their problem issues are. Uh, and I would like for those to be set up during the months of August and September. And I'd like to use, I haven't spoken to Betty and Billy Brooks, but I think that actually the picnic is a really good time to have the ward meeting in that neighborhood. And as I said, it will be very informal, so we'll just make an announcement at the beginning that whatever council is available there at that meeting, that we're willing to talk to them, and we'll be making note of their concerns, uh, to bring back to council. But at the next meeting, uh, or by the next meeting, if you could identify some locations in your wards and get back to me, or either set updates if you want to go that far, uh, it could be a resident's backyard, a church's backyard, or parking lot. Just some, someplace where it would be easy for those residents to just walk down the street as opposed to going to a formal meeting. And you hope for that. I'm hoping, I think it's worth a try. We'll see what, what we get.
How many, you want, first of all?
One, okay, for the seven.
Okay. Uh, work one, your report?
Yes, well, we may be doing flowers this Saturday again. Anyone who wants to come out, contact me. It will be contingent on whether our cocoa liners come in or not, however, we do have, um, flowers coming from teachers going to. And we have the, all the work that we need. Yes, please. Okay, um, I wanted to make the announcement about the car festival that, um, some employees have worked so hard on. We have handouts in the back of the room. Um, the chamber events, upcoming chamber events, ribbon cuttings, uh, June seventeenth, time at the home stretch, that's at noon, and that is on Main Street and Chamber. Also, Moss Row Works is June tenth at noon, another ribbon cutting work, and it's horse.
It's true.
When is that time?
Um, June seventeenth at noon. And that's Main Street. These are both grand openings too, by the way. Our firemen's independence day celebration, July second, we finalized all music for that, I think. Um, still accepting vendors. I actually had some messages this evening from additional food trucks, so hopefully we'll be getting more food trucks. Um, the hub is having an evening night, music, talent, and comedy. The hub is having an open mic night, music, talent and comedy, uh, June seventeenth at seven P M. And let's not forget the son concert series, the historic landmarks of the Western Cultural Center, music and book property this Thursday at seven P M. Thank you.
Thank you. Word two.
Okay, word two. I think everybody within ear reach should prepare for tough times, make sure that you can protect your family, make sure you have food, make sure you have provisions. Although I mean, it's kind of, it's kind of, you don't realize it, you don't want to realize it, and you don't want to deal with it, and that's up to you, but. I got some food that you can give it. Number two. I did some research, two months, uh, average length of the city manager in Weston's eight months. Okay. Uh, if you all was to. Study the city manager, city council, mayor, form of government, you'll come to find that the power is in the budget. And I'll leave that at that. Number three, I sent everybody out an email, didn't get any responses from anyone. Not G Q. It's all elected in the mission. And um. I listened to the president, the resident, whatever, and. He said that he was going to provide for the people of the United States, he was going to take care of us and he wasn't going to let us suffer. And he's going to provide us housing opportunities. He's not going to provide us houses, he's not going to provide us. Food, baby formula, he's going to provide us housing opportunities, housing opportunities on homes, housing opportunities or projects. Just realized. When eminent domain comes in to play, the small communities are the easiest to fight because they don't have the resources to play back. It's all a blooming demon must pitch tonight.
Thank you.
That's the reality.
Word three. Okay, it was a story show, it was, but now I do. Yeah. So I did an experiment. Thank you. Um, first of all, I'd like to thank and welcome our new enforcement, Mr. Willis, I put him right to work at one twenty five Monroe Street. And I did drive down there this evening and it looked like it had been partially cut to where the building was, garage.
Yeah, maybe.
Oh, did the neighbors do that? Okay, I figured as much. But we are working to tackle grass issues. Just give us a little time. I know that's been the majority of a lot of our calls lately. Uh, but we just put Mr. Lewis on the job, so be looking forward to that. I attended the Memorial Day parade and ended up walking traffic. So I don't know what we do with that. We're supposed to do that, nobody came to cut off the traffic at the second street. So. I just took, I just took my own.
So in the past, you agree with the side of this. Police department said it has to come to you all because the intro is overtime.
So an organization needs to request that. Sure, it's not hoping that some lady could be able to. Handle it. Um. Um, I want to give a shout out to our neighborhood watch and the Brooks family because they will be hosting my ward three meeting. On August fifth at five o'clock, so everybody in ward three come out. There'll be wonderful food that will be provided. So that, that's right, so I walked into that. So I know exactly what ward three's meeting will be and please bring any concerns to that. Uh, appreciate everybody being on board, appreciate the time and effort it took on the recent building. Time and house. That, that could have been a really big disaster. And everybody in Julie West would do know on. Thank you. Word four.
Could you explain how that's going to be paid for?
Dave, go on.
It's always your questions. I'd like to thank everybody for coming out tonight. Uh, yeah, well, then as far as award meeting, I may try to have mine with permission behind the Sonic Temple. The black cop and the partner off behind and will furnish food and drinks to my ward member community. But also I'd just like to bring up that. I was very impressed with the, I believe it was the state that did all the cutting of the trees and all the brush and everything. Near Pickers Auto, they were going to turn there, the bridge always coming from nineteen. Uh, because that is a big blind spot when you're coming from Jane Lou, Port Weston, if you're going to cut across nineteen one to East Sixth Street. Uh, when people's coming down from Maine, so I'm glad they got that done as well. That's all I have. I moved to your.
There's a second, second. All in favor, say aye. No she cares. Thank you, you're welcome.
Fourth day. He's always getting torture.
You know what? I bet he has to pay to take him out to dinner.
That's what we're.
Are you gonna touch base with that? Yes. Cut the grass with those seeds. I figured somebody had voted. I didn't see anybody around.
You see the guy across the street? But he did, he did wave at the same time.
Yeah, I did too. I took a picture of it too.
Yeah, I said, thanks for that. The property maintenance company.
Yes, I mean.
Said there?
Oh, okay. Yeah. Monday, she has six people who are very.
Yes, I appreciate that.
I.
I can stop.
After this, she has a Tuesday and Friday at one. I think she likes. Now, if you have to do it from that. Yeah, Mike said it.
So what?
After Jeremy and the gun, really, that's done.